Let's call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Good morning. It's wonderful to see all these people here today. Lots of people put hard work in on the HELP project and this is our day to hear about everything and hopefully get it all moving down the road. Our first item on our agenda is to approve our council amendments from August 2nd.
We approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion passes. And on our agenda next is their HELP presentation with Jeff Blaster and his team.
And the team.
The team.
It's quite a team, I will tell you.
It's a great team.
I'm very appreciative to all of them. Thank you for taking some time, morning, to listen to what is essentially the culmination of two years of hard work. We do have some slides, a PowerPoint presentation. We will have the committee chairs going through the process that each committee went through. And you have, you do not have, I don't believe, the PowerPoint presentation in front of you, but you do have the COC plan, this most recent version, and a copy of the spreadsheet. So two years ago, during the height of COVID, when the American Rescue Plan dollars were starting to come to local communities from the federal government, OKRA, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs in Indiana, put together a project that they called HELP, the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. And just as the name says, their intention was to help local communities use their ARPA dollars to the best advantage to create an enduring legacy for our communities going forward. The commissioners at the time saw the benefit of pursuing this program. We talked to the city of Richmond and they agreed that it would make sense for us to apply as a region. You could apply as an individual community or you could apply as a region. Wayne County ended up being the largest region to participate in the program. After approaching the city, we went to every incorporated town in Wayne County and asked if they would be interested in participating. Two of those communities decided to not accept the ARPA dollars. If you remember, in the very beginning, there were significant strings attached and there were very limited uses for those dollars. So two decided to not accept the funding. We were fortunate enough to get six of the small towns to agree to participate with us. Couple others opted out. They had already made commitments for how they were going to spend their ARPA dollars. And part of the process of becoming, part of the HELP program was to commit a minimum of 30% of your ARPA dollars towards implementation of a strategic investment plan that would be the product of the whole process. As we pulled together the group, it was established by OKRA that there would be four committees formed by each community that participated. Those four would be Strengthening Local Economies, Health and Wellness, Quality of Place, and Enhancing Econ Activity. The next slide shows the financial commitment that was made by each of the communities that chose to participate. So Wayne County had about $12.8 million from the American Rescue Plan, 30% of that, 3.83 million. In our application, we actually pledged up to $10 million. And again, the floor was the 3.83 million, 30%. Richmond committed, the rest of the communities committed 30%. 2.39 million for Richmond, 118,000 for Cambridge City, Milton, 30,000, East Germantown, 15,000, Economy, 11,000, Dublin, 50,000, Spring Grove, 21,000. In addition, we went out to the community and approached some other organizations, asked them to make a commitment. So Sugar Creek Packing committed $100,000, which they will ultimately invest as they see fit from the projects that are in the Strategic Investment Plan. First Bank Richmond, the same thing, $100,000. They will choose which of the projects they invest in. The Economic Development Corporation committed $500,000 of consolidated edit. Wayne County, we agreed to put another $500,000 of county edit towards the program. And then Wayne County Tourism Bureau, just in the last couple of weeks, committed $75,000 to projects in the Strategic Investment Plan. I want to talk a little bit about the core team and the training we went through. Beth, I intended for you to talk about this, but you're sitting way over there. Do you want to come up and talk about the core team training and the community engagement? Because you kind of coordinated that. Okay. You all know Beth Fields, who came onboard January 1 of this year as the community coordinator. Her salary is one of those commitments that we've made for our ARPA dollars. Beth?
So the training, when I took this job, I knew I would have to be available to go to training. And I thought, oh, I'll go to Indianapolis for a couple of days. This will really be fun, meet a bunch of new people. I ended up in Connersville, Indiana, three blocks from where I grew up. But it was very nice. I saw people I knew and it was nice to connect with Connersville folks again. So the core team training, it was put on by OKRA. First, we went to the HELP boot camp. The core team, many of the core team members spent every day there. And as you can see, the training was sponsored by OKRA in partnership with Ball State, their Indiana Communities Institute. We had 15 seats at the training. Some day we filled them all, some days we didn't. People had other commitments. As we have figured out here, over the four days, we had over 300 hours of training. They had folks from all over the United States provide us with training, but the whole, the focus of it was really building, engaging your community members, trying to get those people you never hear from. That was the main focus. That's what I got out of it. After the January training, in February, we had a one-day civic lab training. We have a book of 200 pages with data about our community based down to small, little neighborhoods and census tracts showing what our community needs. Financially, what health, industry. It was another great tool in engaging the core team and figuring out how to take all the comments we get from the community, what the community think we need and what actual data shows we need. So the strategies we used to get the community involved was a three-question survey. And I'll remind you all what those three questions were. What are two or three issues or opportunities your community must address in the next five years? What are two or three things you're willing to work on in the near future? And if you could use one project to make your community better that we could tackle right now, what would you do? So we did that by an online survey. We had one-on-one in-person meetings. We also used community information, plans that have existed from the city of Richmond, for Wayne County, the EDC that had community input saying what our community needs. So responses by the numbers of the seven in-person meetings, they were attended by a total of 240 citizens, 237 completed surveys, 555 completed surveys from our online, 140 completed surveys from local libraries. And we just popped into Richmond High School one day and said, hey, kids, we got about 30, 40 minutes, fill out a survey. Total 932 surveys completed, tabulated, and the results were passed on to the committee and that will be spoken about later. But this isn't expected for you to be able to read, but this is one example of the massive responses to that one question that we received at one location, which was Richmond, Wayne County. What are the three issues, opportunities your community must address? Every comment was tabulated. Every comment was looked at and considered. Pathways?
Thank you, Beth. So as we discussed, we had four pathway committees. I'm going to invite the committee chairs to come up and talk to you a little bit about that process. Just want to remind you that as we approved the application for HELP, we included in that application the core team and the four committee chairs for these pathways. That was all approved by the commissioners before we submitted. So we chose the pathway committee chairs based on expertise in their area of focus, but also someone who served the entire county and had that geography and that mission in mind as they approached this. So the first one up is Strengthening Local Economies. I'll be Shaefer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I was pleased to be able to lead the Strengthening Local Economies Committee for the HELP program. And along with myself, I recruited 13 other community members to be a part of that conversation. And we were fortunate enough to work with Chad Bolser and Evelyn Ribas from Ivy Tech Community College, who helped us facilitate those meetings and who brought a lot of value and data to the table for us to consider. So we ended up meeting two times over the course of about three or four weeks. And our first meeting was really to review all of the community engagement efforts that Beth shared with you. We wanted to understand what the community was saying, what the survey results told us, and then also do a little bit of a dive into some of the existing studies that Beth mentioned from the EDC, city of Richmond's Comprehensive Plan, et cetera, to see what kind of planning had already gone on and what kind of projects do we know we already need but don't have funding to actually accomplish. So once we reviewed all of that information, we also reviewed a lot of key data points that uncovered challenges that we needed to seek to address through this work. So using all of that, we brainstormed economic strategies in several areas. And we were to be focused on workforce development, recruiting and retaining talent, diversifying industry to attract higher-paying wages, increasing entrepreneurship, and promoting diversity and inclusion. So those were areas that we wanted to remain focused on, to derive projects that would impact all of those areas. So after that initial meeting, we took all of that information back to our desks and dove through it some more, read through everything, and convened again on May the 11th. And this time, we wanted to devote our time together to actually developing some projects and programs that were meant to tackle the issues that were before us. So as we broke down a lot of that information, we really came up with 13 top projects that we wanted to discuss further. And those were downtown market rate apartments, a blight elimination program, downtown housing upstairs, as well as full building activations for our main streets, entertainment, event gathering, and outdoor venues throughout the community, maker spaces and coworking spaces. There was a concept for a machine tool experience trailer that would go around the county and train kids in various areas. Downtown building revitalization grant program. Housing needs in general, we knew were a great need across Wayne County. The board activation, a Wayne County pitch program, the water infrastructure and the gateway industrial part, talent recruitment incentives, as well as the Business Builders Entrepreneurship Program. So these project ideas, we actually came up with real projects through this core committee work and, I'm sorry, the pathway work. And then we passed that information along to the core committee to determine which projects we moved forward. So much of the decision-making process, including distinguishing an idea versus an actual project, and that's really what the core team had to decipher. We had a lot of great ideas, but who was an actual entity to move these projects and programs forward? So that's just a little bit about the Strengthening Local Economies Committee. So now I'll turn it over to our next committee member.
Mary Walker is the chair of the Quality of Place.
Thank you. Morning. I hope you don't mind, I'm going to stick to my script because Jeff is timing me. So I know, I know, you've got the watch on. The Quality of Place Pathway Task Force worked with David Terrill and Ball State University and 20 members of, community members, town council members, members that represented all of Wayne County, and just interested parties, and worked diligently to ensure we had town council member representation. That was really important to us from every HELP community. It was also extremely important to ensure we had young professionals, input, and participation at the table. We then sought out members who, through their respective positions, represented all of Wayne County, working in tandem with all of the HELP communities to flush out projects, ideas, opportunities that would add value and instill a sense of place for their communities through various Quality of Place initiatives. We have quite a few Quality of Place team members here and I would just like to give them, and those that might be, who weren't able to come, a huge shout out and thanks for all of their dedication and passion throughout this process. As a group, we reviewed, evaluated, then prioritized the hundreds of ideas generated from all of the public meetings held throughout Wayne County, as well as the online survey responses. From those responses, we grouped similar project ideas and came up with 37 projects that addressed quality of place needs the most of any committee. These cumulative project ideas were then forwarded to the core committee for their consideration and review. The Quality of Place group had numerous projects that overlapped with various projects from the three other pathways. Key project themes throughout all pathways included housing of all types, childcare, and Main Street revitalization initiatives. Various other Quality of Place initiatives included the Wayne County Murals Project, a multi-use sports complex, park and playground enhancements in all participating HELP communities, along with the desire to provide matching grants, up to $10,000 to all HELP communities through the IHCDAs Creating Place crowdfunding program. Additional ideas included the creation of a state-of-the-art performance venue and the future renovation of a much beloved gym. The Whitewater Gorge Activation Project, also included in the Strengthening Economies Pathway, would include ziplining, canopy tours, kayaking, and more. It would fully utilize the rich adventure-type resources that are amazingly right in our own backyard, greatly strengthening our efforts to attract additional visitation and its much-needed economic impact dollars to Wayne County businesses, while also creating the types of amenities required to attract and retain young talent now. The paradigm we've known for so long has shifted. People can now work anywhere and choose where they want to live and raise a family. Areas who are able to offer a wide variety of amenities that directly coincide with what people are seeking and create a sense of place and belonging will win the population game. For the last few moments of my presentation, I would like to speak to the Whitewater Gorge Activation Project. The Bureau utilizes an AI program called Placer AI. This program utilizes cellphone data collection to assist the Bureau in understanding ours, as well as our competition's, visitation origins, visitation numbers, demographics, future target markets, and more. So I did a little bit of intel using Placer AI and looked at other ziplining sites comparable to the Whitewater Gorge Activation Project being proposed. The similarities were staggering and the direct correlations to the Whitewater Gorge Activation Project were palpable. The example I chose for comparison is the Red River Gorge zip line in Beattyville, Kentucky. So who knows where Beattyville, Kentucky is? I didn't, so I had to look it up. It is smack dab in the middle of nowhere, population 2042. The Red Gorge Zip Line Tour consists of five zip line totals ranging from 700 feet to over 1,900 feet in length, some of which are over 300 feet off the ground and can attain speeds of 55 miles per hour. The first three lines are a canopy tour, allowing users to go through the trees on single lines. The last two are double lines, allowing two people to go at once. These are the longest and the highest lines, allowing its users to breeze over the trees. So I wanted to give you some data from this Placer AI and the reason I found it so staggering. So in this population of 2042, their 12-month visitation numbers were 32,050. The visitor origins that visitors came in represented over 38 states in that 12-month period. Household users, 60% were non-family households, with 40% representing family households of 2.78 persons. Gender, female users came in at 53.7%, and male users came in at 46.2. So I guess the women in this arena are a bit more adventurous. The median users and the age groups, this was fascinating as well. And it really corresponds with what we're trying to do as a county with the EDC, tourism, and others, the Chamber, to really pursue and attract and retain young talent. So the age groups, the median users, 18 to 24, represented 43.6% of those visitors. 25 to 34 represented 13.5. 0 to 17, 12.1. 65-plus, 9.2. 55 to 64, 8.3%. 35 to 44, 7.7. And 45 to 54, 5.6. The population by generation, millennials won this category hands down, representing 57.1% of their overall visitation. Educational attainment, the highest was college associate's degree at 28.96%. Next was high school graduate at 23.1. Then a close third was bachelor's degree at 22.5, with advanced degree coming in at 17.3%. All of that via the 32,000 visitation. The purpose for sharing these facts, fact-based stats, is to show unequivocally the enormous short and long-term potential the Whitewater Gorge Activation Project could have on all of Wayne County, both in our ability to generate additional tourism visitation and its much-needed economic impact dollars for our Wayne County businesses, and through these quantifiable measurements in terms of its comparable user demographics, age, educational attainment, average income. This fact-based data fully embodies the generational market segments that Valerie and her team are working so hard to attract. This project would serve as a catalyst for continued visitation growth and further enhance our tremendous potential to attract and retain young talent for all of Wayne County. The Tourism Bureau wholeheartedly believes in this project and its future capacity to generate massive, long-term benefits for Wayne County. So much so, that as Jeff said, we are supporting this project in the amount of $50,000, which is huge for us. We have also committed to supporting the Wayne County Murals Project at a cost of $20,000, as well as $5,000 going towards the Cambridge City Performance Venue Development Project. In closing, we strongly believe each of the projects listed before you in the Wayne County SIP Plan serve as a multi-pronged, multifaceted approach to Wayne County's quest for future growth. These ARPA funds are once-in-a-lifetime dollars. We ask for your consideration and support to utilize these dollars for these once-in-a-lifetime projects. Thanks. If any of you would like to look at some of the data, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mary. These are some of the Quality of Place issues that came out of the small towns. And we'll review those in a few minutes. But we actually met with the small towns at one of their town council meetings. They advertised that we had this opportunity for townspeople to come and talk to them about what they saw for the future in their town. These are projects that came from that. And virtually all of these are proposed for funding in the plan that we have in front of us. Next up is Enhancing Econ Activity. Cassia St. John is the chair.
Good morning. So I feel like I have the easiest group out of the four. So the e connectivity was charged with focusing on broadband needs and digital equity across the county. Fortunately for us, we've already been working since 2021 through the Wayne County Broadband Task Force. So we really just use the same task force for this e connectivity. It really just kind of makes sense. So what we did is we did, we have been talking about what the needs are around the county for broadband. Many of you service rural areas of parts of our county, so you know what the broadband needs are. So we've been actively working on that. At the same time, we wanted to hear what our residents said. So just for a little bit of context, if you remember, we did a Wayne County broadband survey in 2021. We had more than 1,500 responses that said, hey, we need it in these areas. And so we kind of knew where the target areas were. So we're also working in conjunction with the Wayne County Digital Inclusion Plan, which we already have established. And so again, I felt like we were more at an advantage. And so when we worked with Purdue Center for Regional Development, they said the same thing. They're like, you already kind of know what's going on. You know where your needs are, et cetera. I will spare you all of the lingo and all the different funding streams, but what this task force really did is we kind of narrowed it down from what the survey results said, what our community has been saying. And so we came up with these areas of focus. So we said we could do some additional hotspots for libraries. We could do some wireless Wi-Fi in our parks across the county. That was a significant need that was noted from our residents that, hey, when COVID hit and we don't have internet, we were trying to go to locations to do that. So we thought we could expand some public Wi-Fi spaces. That might help service our residents until everything else kind of gets in line. At the same time, enhancing digital skills for our senior population, upgrading services in community centers throughout the county, working with our main street organizations to strengthen Wi-Fi in the downtowns for our small businesses and patrons. And then the last was establishing emergency towers to support emergency communications. So we took this back to the core team and really what we started doing is what other funding is happening, right? So we had to kind of massage what was going on. So the additional hotspots for libraries, libraries do have access to a federal fund called Emergency Connectivity Fund, so we took that piece out. So they could get additional hotspots to do that. They also have some e-rate special pricing for services, so we took that one out. Enhancing digital skills for seniors, that is part of the Digital Inclusion Plan. I'm happy to report today that Spectrum Communications will be granting Wayne County Foundation dollars to do just that through our libraries for our seniors across the county. So that will be coming, that announcement will be coming in the next, the official announcement will be coming, I'm telling you now. Here probably in a few weeks, directed from Spectrum. So that piece has been taken out. Working with the main street organizations and then the emergency connectivity. We've also been talking with the Indiana Broadband Office about the federal infrastructure bill for broadband. So under the infrastructure bill, there is no funding available for emergency services. Why? We don't know. All we know is that it's not happening. So what we did is we narrowed down from all of these things, what we did is we narrowed down the projects for e connectivity for the Strategic Investment Plan. And the projects that are presented in the budget today are... And the projects that are presented in the budget today are an assessment for the emergency towers and emergency services needs throughout the county. You have to do an assessment before you actually decide what and which towers and where they're going to go. So the assessment is one thing, the actual structure of the emergency towers at 1.5 million, that falls right in line with the research and everything that we did. We've seen everything from 1.2 million upwards to 2 million, depending on needs and where it goes. So at 1.5, we fell right into that. And then we are doing two Wi-Fi expansions. So one is in the five communities across the county and their public parks. So we are going into the smaller communities and strengthening that. We already have the quotes, we already have the bids, so the pricing that is in the budget is guaranteed. The third one, or excuse me, the fourth project is Wi-Fi expansion in Richmond Parks. So for Wayne County, the Wayne County Foundation had some specific funding that had to be used in Richmond, and so we shifted all those monies to take on that project itself. So what we're doing here with the E-Connectivity, we feel like we are supporting our Wayne County Digital Inclusion Plan. We are, you know, supporting what our Wayne County broadband survey results said from our residents in 2021. We're supporting what the residents stated in this most recent survey through this help process, and at the same time, we're supplementing what's happened in the Broadband Office with next-level connections, the Emergency Connectivity Fund, the Affordable Connectivity Program, as well as just, you know, the last mile expansion. So that is kind of E-Connectivity for Wayne County. We would encourage you to support that. In addition to that, the Ford Wayne County Steering Committee has been actively making updates and listening to what is happening throughout the county, and they represent a lot of key leadership across the county, and several of those members are here represented today, so I want to thank them for doing that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, as always, answer any of those after our presentation's over. Thank you.
Thank you, Akasha. And last but not least is Health and Wellness, and Sherry Harland from Reed Health is the committee chair.
Good morning. During the Health and Wellness Conference Committee meetings, we actually spent a lot of time, we had a lot of ideas, not necessarily a lot of projects. And our highlights were youth engagement, childcare issues, where we had several childcare providers involved, a mobile unit for resources, as well as we spent a lot of time on housing with substandard living conditions, basic needs and affordable housing, which is needed all through our county. As we narrowed things down, we looked at some of the things that we needed were already covered through strengthening local economies and quality of place. And we really focused on what was a need that we actually didn't have that could benefit our entire county. And we reviewed the Family Resource Center, which is already in several other counties, and we highlighted the Family Resource Center. With one of the challenges was we saw that often there's something with youth engagements needed, sometimes talking with the parents is needed, and hopefully by having this Family Resource Center, we can have the entire family sitting down, talking, and coming to agreement. And as part of this, when we know we need mobile resources, the Family Resource Center will have a van that can go out to the other smaller cities that are part of help in all through our county. With that, the Family Resource Center is actually going to be inside in a head start building, and we are remodeling that so the public can come for safety reasons. We've also started partnering with the public housing units, with some of the local churches that are in that area, and we hope to really bring some just knowledge and people getting together to help with their family matters. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. once the committees conducted their work, they passed along their recommendations to the core team. The core team was made up of about 25 folks, any of whom you've already heard from today, but also representatives from each of the participating towns in the city of Richmond. It was the core team's responsibility then to pull together through a prioritization meeting. Rich of these ideas that came forward could be quantified into a specific project, a budget number attached to it, and that rose to a level of priority that it should be funded with available resources. So what you have in front of you, the Strategic Investment Plan, is the culmination of all of that work. We're 35 minutes into this at this point. I want to be aware of your time, but I'd like to take a few minutes and run through, switch to the Strategic Investment Plan and run through the actual projects that are recommended. And we'll start with the Wayne County projects. Remember that as we talked about this program and have for the last two years, the rules that we shared with everyone, there was absolutely no expectation of the city of Richmond or the six small towns to use their ARPA dollars outside of their communities. What was there was going to stay there to do the work that they needed to do. However, the region is all of Wayne County, and so you will see, and you have already seen, that there are several instances, several projects that are recommended for funding, partial funding, sometimes full funding, by the county through our American Rescue Plan dollars or some of the Edit dollars, you know, because each of these areas is part of the county, and it will benefit the citizens of Wayne County. And most of these projects will benefit all of the citizens of Wayne County. So let's start, and I'll run through these quickly. I know you've had this for three or four days now, and you've had a chance to look through it, but I want to connect some of the dots. So the very first one is Student Community Engagement Program. I've heard Sherry talking about that as an important issue for the Health and Wellness Committee. The idea here is to work with each of the five school systems to put together a leadership program that would engage their students. They would create a group of students that would be representative of their school district. Those kids can act as a sounding board for school administration. They can get feedback and input from these students at the same time that they're educating their students about the county, about their community, about opportunities in Wayne County, and helping them with putting together their own ideas on what kind of project they could develop for their community, their school, that would benefit the people of Wayne County and make Wayne County a more attractive place for young people to live, either to stay here after graduation from high school or to come back after graduation from college. There is a program through the Indiana Housing Community Development Group called My Community, My Vision. This is kind of, we've kind of patterned this program after that state program. The state program has a lot of strings attached, it has very rigid guidelines, and they actually select a very, very limited number of schools to participate each year. So that will be a possibility for these schools. They would not have to follow, apply to IHCPA and follow their guidelines. We propose to fund this with $50,000 from the county's health commitment, $10,000 for each of the school systems. The EDC also values this project and would commit $10,000 to each of the school systems. We're in the process of working out with those schools exactly what their project would look like. Then we'll do some additional fundraising to see if we can't raise that number. We want the number to be high enough so that the kids can engage in a meaningful project and to have the opportunity to do something for their community. Let's move on to the next. Murals Project, you heard Mary talk about. There's been a murals project in the past, it's been incredibly successful. There are, how many murals now in Wayne County, Mary? Five murals. This would add another 11. 10 on private walls and then one that would be a collaborative opportunity for community engagement, for people to come together and help paint that 11th mural. And the funding there, it's roughly $10,000 per mural. County's commitment, we would ask for $75,000. $20,000 is committed from the Tourism Bureau, and we're looking for another $20,000 in grants to support that program. Infrastructure for Market Rate Housing in Unincorporated Areas. Now, the city does, takes care of most of the, most of the infrastructure within the city of Richmond, and towns do that in their towns. This would be in the unincorporated areas where we would help put in sewer or water. In this case, the project that this is based on would be a water project. It would support a development just outside, in the unincorporated areas outside the city of Richmond. That same project would also activate some parcels of land that are within the city limits and allow for additional development within the city of Richmond. So $800,000 of commitment from ARPA from the county. So housing, infrastructure, and amenities are really the three themes that you'll see throughout these projects. Expansion of childcare is becoming a necessity in Wayne County, particularly if we want to attract folks from outside of the county. They need to have a dependable place, a high-quality childcare venue. We're recommending an allocation of $300,000. Since we put this together, we've found that the state has not funded a local project. They have a limited amount of money, and there were more applications that could be funded. So we're hoping to be able to fund this project. The total cost is $300,000. We've allocated that here. And so take away that asterisk, it is needed because the FSSA grant was denied. And this would, this would specifically serve kids, infants and toddlers, so kids that need special attention, care, and a higher ratio of caregivers to students. Housing Infrastructure for Single Family Housing, similar project to the last one. The infrastructure in this case would be in the Western Wayne area. And one of the things we're looking at as we get approval from the various bodies, but specifically here, from you all and from the commissioners, we will put some flesh to the bones of these projects, how we're going to do them, how we're going to determine which projects, specific projects are funded. We used some examples so that we could quantify and have some budget numbers that were meaningful. So that's what we've done here, but we will have to take that to the next level, assuming that we get approval from the county. This one would be in the neighborhood of $340,000 in total. Would actually come from a mixture of the ARPA funds as well as county Edit. A suggestion of a private contribution from Sugar Creek in the Western Wayne area. They're very interested in creating additional housing opportunities, so it's easier for them to recruit folks to Sugar Creek. Public Wi-Fi, you heard Akasha talk about that. This would be putting infrastructure into the parks that are going to come up here in the individual communities, projects, but relatively small amount, under $15,000 that would put in the infrastructure. Then the communities would pay the ongoing cost of paying for the Wi-Fi service. Emergency Communications, again, you've heard of this, and we've started the assessment process. We needed to do that early so that we could make sure that we fit the timeframe. Remember, all of our ARPA dollars have to be committed, contractually committed or budgetarily committed in 2024, and then any construction program has to be completed by the end of 2026. So we started the assessment process early on this one so that we could make sure it fit that timeline. I would say that we have had some preliminary discussions. If we do end up putting up towers, is that their possibility? Because those towers would be in locations that have some challenges in terms of communications, including broadband, and so we'd look at the possibility of having broadband providers put up Wi-Fi signal from those towers, if that's possible. Light Elimination, that came up in several different meetings and conversations, and so we put funding from both the county and EDC's Edit Dollars into that project of light elimination. Grant Administration, you all included that and entered into a contract for a grant administrator to administer the community development. All right, let's move on. So the next category are projects that are jointly between Richmond and Wayne County. Main Street Revitalization Programs, and this is roughly a million dollars from the county, a million dollars from the city. We would anticipate projects that would require some input, probably a 50/50 match or in that neighborhood for property owners or renters that want to put in amenities, that want to do facade programs, that maybe a building needs a new roof to keep it from deteriorating, or using the upper floors, rehabbing the upper floors for housing or for business purposes. And so this would be a grant program that would require a match. And the city money would be spent on Main Street in Richmond. The county money could be spent in any of the communities that are participating in the help programs. If there was a project, a business in Cambridge City or Dublin or Milton that wanted to participate in the program, they would be eligible as well. So would, so would Richmond businesses if it comes to that. Next. Animal Welfare, this was a significant issue that was discussed, and the committee determined that we really got the issues that might be here. And so we allocated $50,000 from the city, $50,000 from the county to do a study to look at look at all of the capacity and the challenges and the needs throughout the county to give us a plan of what might be going on, what needs to be done, particularly as it relates for our purposes to the county and the county's issues with animal control, but also of course for the city. Whitewater Gorge activation. Now, this is one where the numbers have changed significantly. Originally, the suggestion was that 2.625 million be allocated. $625,000 of that was going to come from the Community Development Law Grant. We found out a week ago, Friday, so about 10 days ago, that it was not eligible because the city has some other funding for the gorge from another federal agency. And so you can't have two federal grants open at the same time for the same project. So we've shifted money around and the information we have now reflects all of that. But for example, we took some money away from the Family Resource Center because they initially were going to buy a building. They were able to partner with Head Start and use that building, so they just have some improvement expenses and purchase of a van. So what originally was 425,000 went down to $50,000 that they needed and asked for. So we moved money into this from other ARPA commitments that in that case, $375,000, we moved over to the gorge. So we did that with a couple of different projects as we moved money into other projects from CBPG. We took some of the money away that we were proposing originally to fund from the county. And so we ended up almost in the same place, just different sources of money. We ended up with a total of 2.65 million. We did that originally, 2.2675, something like that. Tourism Bureau also has committed resources there, as has the state, which can redevelopment in the city. So the total, you see there, the largest share, 1.2 million from the county. Originally, that was 1 million from the county. And that's gone up because of shifting money around. Again, we think this particular project has significant impact from an attraction perspective, but also from a retention perspective. It's an amenity that few places have. We've talked about for 100 years. Paul Lengel reminded us that Richmond is here because of the gorge. And so a lot of the development of Wayne County happened because of the gorge. People couldn't get across it, so they stopped and settled to town. This has taken advantage of what we have. We don't have seashore, we don't have mountains, although we do have the highest point in Indiana. It's not a mountain. But we do have the gorge, it's beautiful. We want to make it more beautiful and more attractive for people to visit and come from around the country, around the Midwest, to visit that gorge and the amenities there. This is a starting point. The total cost of that project as laid out by the Richmond Parks Department is something like 12 or 15 million dollars, I believe, over phases. This would get us a significant start. Family Resource Center, we just talked about. That's going to be a huge benefit to the whole county. It's located in Richmond, but they tend to take their programming out to the county. That's what the van investment would do for them. Let's go on to the next one. We'll get into the city of Richmond projects here in just a minute. But again, I want to, I want to ask you, Beth, that we're getting close to an hour here, so I can talk about all of these or we can take questions. Remember that each of the small towns has a section and each of the small towns has a contribution that's recommended by the committee for their own projects. I think usually five of the small towns have a $10,000 contribution that's recommended for creating places. You've heard that before. The five small towns, all but Spring Grove, have, are putting together projects that would improve or create a park in their towns. They all, they all talked about having basketball courts and they, some of them have basketball courts, but they haven't been resurfaced in 30, 40, 50 years. This would do that. It would, it would allow additional amenities, some playground equipment, picnic tables, a little bit of landscaping, fencing, those kinds of things. So the idea is we'll, we'll generate $50,000 for those towns through donations. Contribute more than $10,000, that's the maximum. Dollar-for-dollar matching grant from IHCAA. So if they raise $50,000, it's matched by $50,000. Those small towns, $100,000 project is huge. They're all really excited about it. Strongly request to, to approve that program. We have started fundraising. We're at about the 35,000 mark in commitments and we're never going to be able to get to that 50,000 mark. The smallest of the communities with 150 residents is not going to be able to raise $50,000 in economy unless Gary, you know, lights and checks. But we think, we think collectively we can do this. It's a small commitment from the county for projects that are going to be huge for those towns. The sixth town, Spring Grove, has opted for a project to create site for the town. And so you'll see a recommendation of $10,000 from the county to help them. Again, there are a number of other projects. I'm happy to discuss them, but I've already taken up an hour of time. If you have specific questions, the team is, is here to answer any of those questions you might have. If you want to go through the rest of the projects point by point.
We've all had that for about a week now to look at and go over. And I urged everyone to look through those things. Does anyone have questions for Jeff or any of the team members? Doesn't sound like we do. I want to take just a minute to thank Jeff for the countless hours that he's put into this project because I don't think we'd be where we are right now had you not taken this on and done that. And Beth, as your helper, of course. And then also Sheri and Mary and Acacia and Valerie for all your time because I know this is all above and beyond what you already have to do to keep busy with. And I want to thank the towns.
A hundred people that served on the committees and a thousand that served in the, in the process of gathering information.
Yeah, it's amazing that we've had this opportunity that pulled our whole county together for the first time. And I think it's amazing. And I think it'll spur on continued interest in future projects because people have seen us all come together and work together. So, yeah. And like Jeff said, a lot of these things wouldn't happen in these small towns if, if we weren't able to support those projects. And you know, a few years ago, we started hearing this quality of life, quality of place thing. We had never talked about that. And then all of a sudden, it's, it's everything. It attracts people, it keeps people, it makes people move here. And we've got to do things that will enhance our county and increase our population.
Honestly, we're behind the curve on that.
We are, we are. Yeah. So this is a great opportunity to help turn that around. So what we need to do today as council is approve this plan. Basically approve the spreadsheet that we have in front of us as a plan. And so if no one has any other questions or comments.
I would make a comment. I've attended several meetings with the different committees, basically the core team, the NIMAT. And a lot of work has went into this. A lot of discussion on especially different projects. I would recommend that we approve this plan that they have created for us. So I'll make a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds. So.
I do have a question for Jeff.
Okay.
Jeff, when we get towards the end, things have to be spent by the end of 2026. What happens if some of these projects don't materialize, don't get completed?
Sure.
There's a lot of things hanging.
Absolutely. Understood. And this is not the end. This is if you approve this and the commissioners approve because the commissioners haven't approved it yet. That's the starting gun, basically. And so in particular, I'm sure your question is directed to the county investment in these projects. And what happens if, for example, we allocate $300,000 and they spend $200,000? That money would come back to the county. We're in a different place than a lot of the towns and the city because the recommendation that you're acting on is that we spend just south of $6 million where 3.8 million is the minimum requirement. So we will certainly have committed enough that we will meet the 30% requirement. And then we can, if there's money left over, if a project doesn't come to fruition, we can move that money around. The key will be to make sure we know that by the end of 2024 so that we can recommit it. Or we can take money that we commit to, just pick a project, the gorge redevelopment, and say there's $10,000 left over, we can recommit that to another project. We'll have much better numbers in the next six months than we have right now. Tried to be somewhat conservative for just this reason. And again, particularly for the towns and the city because they have to spend that much money to be eligible to participate in the program. So we'll be monitoring that very closely. As I said, the work is just now starting. It's going to, it's going to get more intense as time goes by, but they're all committed to it. Hopefully they will be by the end of this month. The plan is we bring this to the county and starting next week, we'll be going to the small towns to get their approval of all of these projects. And once we have that commitment, then we're off and running. So as soon as that's done, in October, we'll start formulating the plans, making sure that we're ready to go and things get done.
A follow-up question on the same, same thing. It has to be, if dollars aren't spent on a particular project or it doesn't look like they're going to need that, it has to be recommitted by the end of '24?
So we will, we will be pushing that to make sure that everything's in place. And a contract, you know, most of these things will be done by contractors, so we need to have that contract in place before the end of 2024 so that we have that number locked down of what we're spending those dollars.
All of these, I mean, there's a large number of projects here. So if between the end of '24 and the end of '26, there's changes or something doesn't get done, can't get completed or whatever, we just lose that money?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so, but we're working on the details.
As you said, it had to be recommitted by the end of '24. And so my question is then those two years after that, if money isn't spent?
I understand the question.
Yeah.
We will double check that for you, but the answer is.
There could be quite a bit of money involved. We don't know, but anything can happen.
Our intention certainly is that there won't be money that falls into that category. Once those commitments are made, we'll follow through and the funding will all be in place. So it's, it's not a question of having enough money. It may be a question of having too much, but I doubt that because we'll have a final bid ready to go for that final commitment. If the bid comes in low, we'll be able to shift that money before the end of next year.
Jeff, will you come back to us if somebody, something changes before the end of this year?
Absolutely.
Be committed?
Keep you posted on a monthly basis. The other thing that I would mention is we've got a little bit of wiggle room built in in terms of timing because there are other resources built into this plan. Most of the folks that I have talked to are more than willing to be able to shift money here or there. We've got a million dollars in edit money committed. That money has no time limit. And if there are any questions, we can shift money from edit and replace it with ARPA in a way that we know it's going to be spent. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility, but I don't specifically know the answer to your question. I'll find that.
Anything over 30% of the county's part will revert back to, and we've claimed the lost revenue, so.
Can we spend on?
Yeah, we can still use a poor project, but it doesn't have to be.
Correct. It wouldn't have to be one of the city projects.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It was unanimous.
Thank you so much.
It's amazing.
We really appreciate your support. We continue to work our tails off.
I want to give everybody a hand. We are going to take about a 15-minute break so that we can all come down there and visit with everybody who came today and be able to greet you. So we will reconvene in about 15 minutes. Okay, we're back from recess. No old business or commissioners' comments? Does anybody have any committee reports they need to talk about this morning? I think we're good. I just want to say our next council meeting is October 4th at 8:00 a.m. And workshop will be September 20th at 6:00 p.m. And that will, we are going to recess our council meeting and go to personnel, right?
Right.
Now we're going back to, back and back to our regular council meeting. And we've got discussions on our, on the budget. Is Debbie, is Debbie coming with her computer?
No.
Why not?
She said, "Right."
Didn't know where you were.
I think, I ask her to always come with her computer to every meeting because we've got things to go through, I think, on the budget.
Do we want to take a few minutes?
Could we act on the line items that we would want to add to our budget for court services?
Yeah, we need those line items from the auditor's office. We need the numbers.
Can the motion be to be assigned?
Yeah, we just have to know, we'd have to get them sent.
Have a motion sent here with the line items to be assigned by the auditor's office.
Soon as she gets off the phone, I'll go get it.
Okay. So I'm.
I haven't seen budgets on your agenda.
Well, during this time of year, we're always talking.
Well, communicate with me.
I, I did communicate that we need it every time we have a meeting. So do we want to create those, the two line items we need to fund?
I'll make the motion that within council's budget, we create two individual line items. First being prosecutor supplemental line item to be assigned later when we learn it. And the second being court services supplemental, same thing, the line item number will be assigned when we learn it.
My second.
Okay, motion and a. Okay, motion and a second to create those two line items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Motion passes. We will have to, they both left the room, so we'll have to tell them what we just did.
Who is taking?
Bobby takes.
Bobby, are you still?
Yes. So, that was called the prosecutor's supplemental, and then we have the court services supplemental. And we don't have line items until, numbers, until they come back.
So, somebody needs to, probably Kathy, work between the court, prosecutor's office, and auditor's office to coordinate that.
As soon as we get the line items, then they just need emails about where to pay stuff from because they both know what we're doing now.
Okay. But also, you want, you want those two departments to go back and pull out what?
Well, I think we're going to do that.
Okay, okay.
I think the commissioners have already signed several claims, and so, we'll get that, we'll have to get that stuff.
Okay.
Taking out the right funds. So, Tony, would you like to talk about?
I sure will. We need to make sure that the prosecutor does know.
Yeah.
She'll tell him.
Right.
Prosecutor and auditor work that out, is my thought.
She didn't. It's just a couple sheets.
The first thing I was gonna take a look at. We don't have the current numbers up here, so. Was the corner. Somebody was going to talk to the recorder.
She did never answer me.
Okay.
No, she did not answer me. I emailed her, and I'm wondering if she uses a different email than her county. I was gonna have to go down and speak with her today because I never did get a response.
Yeah, was whether the corner could use that.
And I know the recorder's perpetuation fund, yeah.
To put another employee in there.
Yeah. I should have, I'm sorry, I should have followed up with her today. I didn't realize that she hadn't answered me.
Okay. Anyone else have any other department that they were gonna talk to from last Wednesday's discussion?
Let me get my notes. No, because I talked to the auditor, yeah, and the recorder. Those were the two I was supposed to talk to, and then I just haven't.
So, I had sent out the sheet that I had, the spreadsheet I had modified, but we haven't gotten anything from the auditor's office for modifications. Barry did have some questions, and there was one or two items on mine that did not get changed. It's supposed to be basically just adjusting salaries back to be an equal to a twenty-three.
So, so what is, what are you showing as our current increase over last year's budget in the general fund max?
So, last year, the approved budget was thirty-three million, eight ninety-four, two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-six. Our current, as of last Wednesday, is thirty-four million, eight thirty-four, six thirty-seven. So, we're roughly one million over last year's approved budget. Slightly less than thirty.
And, and we need to fund the health department five hundred thousand as well.
I've not done anything. We didn't. That would have been, you're talking about the line item we put in our budget.
Right.
That, that is still blank. In our budget's line item, it's there. There is a, no, not a line item. There is a health department budget section which has no number.
Yeah. Have you made the change as far as the auditor was concerned?
As far as the five hundred that we have.
The employee in the platform?
No.
We don't have the numbers yet.
Well, we just discussed that this morning, so no, I have not done that. Good. So, the fact is, currently was twenty-three thousand, two seventy-one out of the budget. So, we'll take that to zero.
Right. Any, any other employee positions max that we need to resolve?
We haven't added anything in yet this year, haven't.
Okay, send, sorry. Question again.
Any other employees that we need to resolve, request?
Well, have we officially resolved the question on the corners' requests?
No, we're kind of waiting till we have that. I guess you've got it in your, your computer. It's on page nine.
As of last Wednesday, we did not make any changes in what we requested. We talked about that.
We talked about taking one of the deputies away and splitting that between the other five.
Yeah, we did. I think we reflected our budget numbers, and we left the coroner and the deputy, chief deputy.
And I will.
As part-time.
Yeah, the budget that you, my sheet. Still shows just, it still shows five deputies had a price of nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars each.
Correct. Eliminated one and added to those five.
I'm not sure that we added anything to these five.
We didn't check the amounts?
The ninety-two, ninety-one is adding.
That includes that, okay. Yeah. What I got now. Unresolved question is, the salary of the coroner and the first deputy.
I will.
I didn't take that as being unresolved.
Well, we, no, we, the request has been made, and we have to decide if we're gonna do it or not. And I make a motion that we leave it as it is.
Second. Both of them.
Yep.
Yep.
Gary seconded.
Is everybody in agreement?
I mean, as is like how it is this year, not the new request, yeah.
So, at this point, the.
Leave the coroners and the first deputy the same as this year.
So, for the coroner, that would remain at twenty-five thousand, eight oh seven.
Right.
And the chief deputy would remain at nineteen, three fifty-six.
Correct.
Correct.
And then we've got our Debbie. As far as the recorder's perpetuation fund, it continues to grow. Is it possible for us to pay another employee out of that fund?
Yes, I have the one deputy left that you guys are paid for, so other than chief deputy and recorder. Yeah, I, we are willing to do that. It's like, like you know, the real estate fluctuates and, you know, from year to year. How that fund's gonna, you know, go up or down, but we're willing to try to help as much as we can. I also wanted to bring up, I think the commissioners had said something to you before about the glass wall across our counter. And I checked the state board accounts, and they said if I include that in my affidavit that allows you to spend that money on the glass wall, that I could go ahead and use our funds to do that. So, I was, I'd like to request that.
Perpetuation funds?
Yes. Yeah, and come out of the perpetuation.
Well, the line item would be ten, two thirty-seven recorder clerk. And that would go to zero, and then it would need to be picked up. Perpetuation fund.
We need to add that in that perpetuation budget.
And I also need to send an affidavit to you, allowing you to spend that money on that salary, as well as the other salaries, and I will do that. The affidavit would also include the money to the glass wall.
Okay.
In the perpetuation fund, Kim, do we have individual line items in there for personnel? So, we would need to, at workshop, create, well, actually, not create at workshop because we're, I don't know, I guess we could transfer that person now. Is that a possibility?
For the year, is that what you're saying?
You want to do it for twenty twenty-four?
Effective twenty-four.
Okay, if we do it effective twenty twenty-four, then we'll need to have a line item for that person.
So, we can do it sometime between now and the end of the year.
And then could I also get your approval to do the, go ahead with the glass wall? And then I'll get that affidavit to you with the money.
Can you tell us a little bit about?
There's a new law that was created about three years ago where some of these expenses that are coming out of our perpetuation are not, state board didn't feel that they fit into the, what that perpetuation fund was for. So, they asked the recorders to create an affidavit each year that allows the council to spend a certain amount of money, whatever for salaries or this glass wall, things that our office needs to still function, but yet doesn't fall into the records preservation definition. So, I need to prepare that because I thought Debbie prepared it last year before, well, before she left. And I see that it didn't happen, so I need to get that to you guys so that we're okay for twenty-three salaries. So, I will send that to you along with that cost for that wall.
That's what we, I think that's what Tony's wanting to know about. What, can you explain to us what the wall is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the affidavit.
That was interesting.
That's okay, yeah, but now I know.
See, the wall is for some protection for our office. We have a couple different groups that, and other recorders' offices have created some, quite a bit of difficulty. And the rest of us are trying to be proactive. So, the wall would be solid from the counter up, and then a door that would, we would be allowed to, you know, buzz people in or whatever we need to do. And it would just have the, kind of like a bank, you know, where it has the, where we can slide the documents underneath, which is what we're doing now with the Plexiglas. But I just feel like we need to have a little more security. We, we've had some incidences with some of these people. Without getting into too much security-wise as to who these people are, I'm just trying to be proactive about it.
Is this just for your area, or is that all the way down?
It'd just be our area.
Just yours?
I don't, the other city, the rest of it.
And does it go all the way to the ceiling, or it just goes so far up and then?
Not quite. There's a gap that would allow ventilation.
Because of the air, okay.
You know, we originally got an estimate for the, for the two thousand dollars on top of it. Debbie continues to be interested where Nancy was kind of being built into marketing one. So, we got the estimate a couple of months ago, I want to say it was eighteen thousand.
I mean, that's what I had heard.
For just that one section.
What's, what about the north-south? Is there a wall there now that separates your office from?
Yeah, it's made of those cabinets that's six feet tall.
That's, that's part of the front, and then the north-south wall is just a court petition wall between the treasurer and us.
Or a cubical-type wall.
At least it would give us a chance if somebody were to come.
So, do we need to make a motion on that? To allow her to affidavit this for that?
She's gonna bring that to a future meeting, is that right?
I just need, need your approval to, to give it to you to spend, so I can pay the people that do the work. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you for switching that employee.
Yes, that helps out a lot. Thanks, Jeff.
Which, uh?
Making things happen today.
Line, Tony, what's your line item? Did you zero which line item?
We started with, if she wasn't here.
So, what's your question?
The recorder clerk, what was that line item?
Recorder clerk, ten, two thirty-seven, will be switched to the recorder fund.
Perpetuation fund.
That's zero there.
And it'll be zero in the general fund budget. That's one oh two three seven, recorder clerk.
You're in the perpetuation?
No, no.
We're in the recorder's budget.
Oh, you're in county general?
Yeah. We take, deduct that line from the county general and move it to the recorder perpetuation.
In, in that one, though, she does need to put thirty-one, three sixty-four.
In the perpetuation fund, yes.
And the recorder's fund.
That only leaves the recorder's salary and the chief deputy's salary in the general fund budget.
And do we need to, does personnel need to do anything with all that? It's for next year?
Yeah.
It'll be in the new salary on its next year. Okay, gotcha.
And then you're to create two line items in council budget for this year and for next year. One will be called the prosecutor supplemental fund, or supplemental, and the other one will be court services supplemental.
Both in your, in your budget?
Council's budget. Somewhere in the three thousands.
If you can give us numbers on those.
That would be for this year and?
Yeah, and going forward. We need to let the prosecutor's office and the court services know those numbers, and they're gonna. We're gonna run those into the red and, and clean them up at the end of each year.
Can it be thirty-three, nine fifty-five and thirty-three, nine fifty-six?
You're not gonna make an appropriation.
You're not going to make an appropriation now on the?
We're gonna wait, we're gonna run that into the red until?
At the end?
At the end of the year. We just need to create the line items. We voted to do that.
And there's periodically going to be reimbursement checks from the state that will be moved funds.
We do have a question.
Between you, the court, prosecutor's office to work out.
So when the, when the, when the court sends in to the Public Defender Commission for reimbursement, then when we get a check back, does that have to go back into the fund it came out of, the original expense?
It's just gonna go into the general fund.
It's just gonna go, but are we not gonna receive it back into that line so we know where we stand?
No.
Okay, so it's just gonna go to general?
Is this grant?
No. It's just reimbursement of court costs.
You can maybe get with them.
Okay. Okay.
We're gonna have a discussion of whether that should go into the county general fund or be a separate line item for that expense.
Okay. So what's next?
Okay. Did they also get the coroner? Changes for the coroner?
So the coroner, both the coroner and the first deputy salary remains the same as twenty twenty-three.
What is that?
And the coroner?
Coroner.
Line item?
Yeah, can you tell me the location number?
Zero 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 seven. Line item one oh one will be twenty-five thousand eight oh seven.
One oh one hundred.
Yeah.
Line item one oh two oh two is nineteen three fifty-six.
And then did we, and she's got the ninety-two ninety-one on all the other, we changed those last time, didn't we? Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Suggestion by Barry is to make sure that we have all these changes, and also looking for any additional changes by starting at the beginning of the book and going all the way through.
Of just the changes.
Well, we're also looking for cuts. Remember, we have a million and a half.
I compared the, our working document from our last meeting to what we received from the auditor's office and had five or six discrepancies that I just want to make sure that we review. My notes were wrong, or the sheet from the auditor's office were wrong, and be correct, whichever needs to be corrected, so we're on the same page. And I think Max has some of the same, so.
Okay, so if we, is that acceptable to everyone?
Sure.
Are you saying we start with the clerk?
Start with the county auditor.
Yep.
Yeah, you're going with.
Page, page one. Looks like there was a change ten nine forty.
Well, all of the salaries in the audit reverted back to the twenty-three level.
What the, the grant clerk, what was the salary that was put on the job description? Was it the thirty-five three thirty-nine?
Thirty-five three forty is what I have.
Thirty-five three forty.
It should be three forty, it was three thirty-nine and some change, so it should be thirty-three, thirty-five three forty.
We don't have an account number for that one yet.
And right, just by looking, the, the platter room person is gonna get put up to, that twenty-five thousand will be gone.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The, out of the platter room technician. So the difference there is gonna be about a little bit over ten thousand dollars. So in? One oh seven oh one, well, for next year's budget, it, it won't be in there. That'll be zero, one oh seven oh one, the twenty-five thousand dollars from the platter room technician. It to the platter room budget.
Yeah.
We've already got the grant, you've got your grant clerk in there already, so, yeah.
Okay. Twenty-two one fifty.
Thousand. Twenty-two one fifty is supposed to be a thousand, that's right.
And then? Maybe three two hundred?
Zero. Zero.
No, it's two thousand. Oh, yeah, it's zero.
Thirty-three two thirty.
Okay, and it is zero? And two thousand?
Thirty-three two thirty was two thousand.
Very bottom one? Not, no, I'm sorry, the bottom one that was on the screen, thirty-three three forty-one?
Zero, yeah. It's zero.
To pay out of the commissioner's budget.
Yeah.
Eight-ten's supposed to be four hundred?
I had fifteen hundred.
I had fifteen hundred, too.
But maybe we wanted to reduce that, and I dismissed it. Well, some years, already this year has expended twelve hundred thirteen.
Yeah, it was thirty-three eight ninety, it was the next line we made fifteen hundred.
Yes, the one that says four hundred there, Debbie, should be fifteen hundred. Does that total agree with you, Max, now? Three eighty-four, three eighty-seven?
I've got three eighty-four ninety-eighty-seven.
Eight-ten and the sheriff? Right?
We're in the auditor.
Auditor.
Saw the blue highlighted.
What was the total?
No, thirty-three eight-ten, we left the same.
Yeah, right, yeah, thirty-three eight ninety.
Fifteen hundred.
We reduced that to fifteen hundred.
Thirty-three eight-ten to four hundred.
No.
No, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the same.
It's left, I think.
Do you?
No, Tony, I don't have the same number. So what's the total on yours for personnel?
I'm sorry, this might be the trouble, auditors. Eight ninety at fifteen hundred, you're right.
The difference is up there.
Did you take out the twenty-five thousand? And then put in the thirty-five?
I've left.
Thirty-five three forty.
Thirty-five three forty. Okay, so for personnel, I've got every, no, I, yeah. I've got everything in personnel as what it was in twenty-three. And my total is not three sixty-seven nine eighty-seven.
Two eight three forty-four, that's four and a half.
Pardon?
You're saying what it wasn't twenty-three?
I have a total of personnel at three sixty-seven nine eighty-seven, and the numbers that make up that total are all the same as twenty-three.
You've got? You've got, uh? Oh, I see, they're reverting back over to that.
So there's a difference of six hundred. So the auditor, I've got, let's just go down the list.
I can't see that.
I got seventy-five eight ninety-eight for the auditor. Fifty-six nine twenty-four, chief deputy. Payroll clerk, ten two twenty-five, I got forty-four three twenty-five. Bookkeeper, number ten two thirty-six, I got forty-four three twenty-five. Sale settlement slash tax sale clerk, number ten seven oh seven, I got thirty-nine eight ninety-five. Deduction clerk, number ten nine thirty-nine, I got thirty-five three forty. Got the clerk, number ten nine forty, I got thirty-five nine forty.
It's three forty.
Twenty-three salary I got on here was thirty-five nine thirty-nine.
The best twenty-three's not even showing up on there.
On clerk, on number ten nine forty?
Not, up there, there's not a twenty-three. That nine thirty-nine twenty was changed last? I don't understand my note.
So the thirty-five nine thirty-five was up to twenty-three?
On five nineteen, that got changed to thirty-five three forty.
Okay, so that, that's, okay. Ninety-five three forty?
Thirty-five three forty.
Nine forty.
So my total now is three sixty-seven three eighty-seven. Okay, so that, on that line item, that, of that one, twenty twenty-three was not thirty-nine.
Yeah, it was wrong, I think.
For personnel? Three eighty-four, three eighty-seven.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
So to the treasurer? What's, what's the total? You have, Max?
My grand total is two seventy-one four twenty-five.
Okay.
Let's just go down the list. Treasurer at ten one hundred, seventy-five eight ninety-eight. That, that was, that's not the right one, the old.
As did get put back.
Then the chief. I got two seventy-one four twenty-five. So what's your total on personnel?
Uh, two forty-nine three twenty-five.
Yes.
I did talk to Nancy, and she said if we wanted to do her overtime at zero, that would be fine with her.
Instead of two hundred?
Comp time, instead of two hundred fifty.
Yes.
Change that to zero.
Which line item?
Thirty-six. So twenty-two one ten was fifteen hundred?
Twenty-two one ten.
It's fifteen hundred.
Okay, I think I've changed that. So wait a minute. You're saying a grand total of?
The total of the thirty thousand is seventeen thousand three hundred. It's right above you, though.
Right above the one.
Oh, I got nineteen seven, so let's back up. Got the fifteen hundred, right.
Three three zero five zero is five hundred. Three three two thirty's eight, eight hundred?
Thirty-three what?
Eight, thirty-three two thirty.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Thirty-three six seventy's five hundred. Thirty-three eight-ten's four hundred. Thirty-three eight ninety-zero.
That one was thirty-three two hundred.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
So my grand total now is two sixty-seven six seventy-five.
Yep, there you go.
We, we also need, you know, to be looking for any cuts as we go through here.
Where's the next one?
The next one is the recorder. And Max, what, what's your total?
My grand total now is one thirty-two seven forty-two.
Okay, is there anything on there that, in this budget, I don't think there is?
So for next year, did, did we just change her?
Moved that one position.
That one position out of here, we did that, right?
What about blueprint? Line item thirty-three three ten?
I've got a question mark on office supplies and blueprints.
Do we have that paper she gave us the first budget hearing? Because she had a whole list of stuff she was paying out of perpetuation, and I don't know if it's, do you have it? Is it, uh? I was wondering if some of that's still in her budget. Yeah, she wanted to increase blueprint film processing, thirty-three ten.
I've got fifty-one ninety on that.
To fifty-one ninety, because last year she paid five thousand dollars for microfilm creation, and it's paid every year. She increased her dues and subscriptions to seven sixty.
Okay.
Her office supplies.
Blueprint's probably fine. Gary, you said, what, what line item?
Twenty-two one ten. I had a question mark there, office supplies.
Yeah, she's.
I've got zero on that.
Twenty-two one ten is fifteen hundred.
It is fifteen hundred, she, she brought it down five hundred from last year. And then her travel and lodging, thirty-three two thirty. She put it to zero on, on here, and we don't have it zero in there, do we?
Yeah, we do.
Do we, okay. Do you want to make office supplies five hundred? No, she increased it to fifteen hundred for a reason.
She changed it fifteen hundred for two thousand, that's your budget.
She put it down five hundred already. But I was thinking she still has a perpetuation fund, couldn't she, if she needed it? I mean, if we're looking? It's for a toner, and I don't know why she couldn't pay that out there, but she said she'd like to see if she can cut more next year, or the next time, but.
Okay.
So what's your grand total now, Debbie?
Thank you.
Okay, next up is surveyor. Max, first of all, what's your total?
Two forty-seven oh fifty-nine.
Okay, so on twenty-two one twenty, we zeroed that, supply, we zeroed that out?
Yeah, we did.
No, not that one, the next one down, the three hundred?
Three hundred dollars.
Above one.
That three hundred dollar, yeah.
Thirty-three two ten?
Thirty-three two ten at zero.
Yeah.
Thirty-three two ten?
Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Tony, or Gary, what, did you just say?
I said I got thirty-three two ten at zero.
I've got that at three hundred.
No, it's zero.
And then thirty-three two forty at a thousand. Thirty-three six twenty at a thousand.
I've got that at five hundred, thirty-three six twenty.
I have a thousand.
Eight ninety at five hundred.
Is it a thousand?
I guess it's twenty at a thousand.
Which ones were those?
Eight ninety at five hundred, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So your total is two forty-three seven fifty-nine?
What I did was put things in the box.
I think you're.
I'm at two forty-three seven fifty-nine.
Yep. Okay, anything?
This one you are.
This one. Two oh seven three eighteen.
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, looking down through the expenditures in the corners.
Pretty much had everything.
Twenty-two one ten, we took from twelve hundred to five hundred. Twenty-two one twenty, we zeroed them.
Twenty-two two ten to five thousand. Usually five hundred or five thousand.
Twenty-two two. Twenty-two one ten?
Uh, one, no, one ten. It's five hundred, yeah. He took his gas back down.
Twenty-two two ten is five thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty-two four thirty is fifteen hundred.
Right.
Twenty-two five hundred is seven thousand. Twenty, or excuse me, thirty-three two thirty is seven hundred. Thirty-three two ninety is five hundred. Thirty-three three hundred is ninety-five thousand.
No, Max, you guys agree on the, the bottom number? No, then I think that's all. But, but is there anything?
Pretty much slashed that.
Yeah, we did. Almost twelve thousand less than last year.
Okay, the county assessor, Max, what is your total?
Six sixty-four six ninety. We reduced a couple, three line item, four line item. Next one?
Would be, um, I'm just making sure there's nothing else that we can reduce there. Next up is county prosecutor.
And I did have a note, which I just found a little bit ago, I was supposed to ask about twenty-two one twenty. So I apologize, I didn't ask, but I will. Printed office supplies.
Nine seven four seventy.
Twenty-two one twenty, printed office supplies.
That's what Kathy just said she was supposed to ask about and she forgot, so. Chuck with them and see if that's why that's.
Yeah, you do.
Hold it.
That's the one we okayed, the one. It's in the one thousands and they're all oh nine.
Secretary Kribble, I got, yeah, I got that different.
Thirty-nine eight ninety-five.
Twenty.
Total's nine seventy-four seventy-nine. Sorry.
Fifty thousand four sixty-one. Mm-hmm.
One oh seven. Fifty-four sixty-one.
And the next one down?
Then I drop down to, I guess, the prosecutor of nine. Which doesn't have a number. Then I drop down to another ninety-four oh forty-three with no number.
Oh, that one should be gone. We only have one.
So.
We only have one here, ninety-four.
Yes.
So I took that out.
New thirty-nine eight ninety-five.
Now I got a total of eight seventy-six four thirty-six.
I, I would guess that twenty-two one twenty, we could take from six thousand down to fifteen hundred. And we'd do some transfers there. If need be, there may be some expenses that might be paid elsewhere.
Might have put some in there, uh, for this capital case too.
Oh, yeah, there could have. Extra put in there.
I was referring to.
New line item.
Yes.
Okay, so we're just gonna change it, I don't need to talk to them?
No.
Okay.
My grand total now is eight ninety-six five seventy-six.
Reference books time? Yes.
Twenty-five hundred.
No, there was expended in twenty-two.
Nine hundred dollars in twenty-two, nine oh two.
You're in the wrong line.
Twenty-two four seventy?
There was twenty-four hundred spent in twenty-two. They haven't spent any this year.
That may be like Westlaw one time. I gleaned over that twenty-four thirteen, so.
I mean, they used to have thirty-eight hundred in that budget in years past, but now they haven't spent.
I, I would imagine they do a lot more online, but if they, if Westlaw, if they bought the books, um, they may not have bought the books for this year yet. Okay, county extension.
I got a total of one ninety-seven oh forty-one.
Looking down. Here. I think we're good. Wayne Township Assessor. Max, what's your total?
Two hundred and twenty, four forty-two.
We, we cut that while he was in here, so that one's good, probably.
We cut several lines in there.
Okay, county council. Training salary.
We, we have that for people who are leaving and, and so if they want to bring somebody in for a couple weeks to train them, uh, that's.
That's for offices to do.
All, if any office can come to us for that.
Earlier this year, we approved one for Judge Gray.
Yeah.
Yeah. So should there's something faded out of that?
Yeah, there should have been.
I think we talked about this Wednesday and decided that maybe it hadn't come through the process yet or something.
I think if we're cutting though, that's probably a line item that could be cut and if we need to add money to it.
We could. And we can cut it down to.
Reduce that to fifteen thousand?
Sure.
Which, which number are you talking about?
Zero, 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 three in the council's budget.
We've done nothing in this yet. To the health department.
Okay. Our contractual professional's really high. Um, one, three three two hundred. Spent thirteen.
Spent eleven thousand twenty-one.
How about if we reduce that to twenty-five thousand?
Which line item?
Line item thirty-three two hundred goes from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand.
I have a question real quick for you, Mark. Um, that, that sixty thousand dollars that we're supposed to give to the four D every year, how do, how do, do I need to make a claim for that? And submit it?
Yes.
And then also for that achiever?
Do that every year.
Okay. Can you help me with that?
Why it doesn't come from the health department for the four D?
Well.
Can you help me with that?
So, so can we not set it to where automatically the first of January or whatever, we just go ahead and move that?
We need to look at our budget, the first of January, do those transfers.
Should be a list of those.
We need to pay attention to this and say, oh, we do that. And the achiever thing, we need to send that one too. They haven't asked yet, but.
They haven't asked, do we just do?
Yeah, we need something to let us move that money over there.
To.
But we don't have it.
I, I. See, and Bob has no recollection of that. So we need to make sure whoever it is.
Whoever go with that.
Because, yeah.
Over there needs to.
Well, that's. Well, Judge Horn, and they don't, they weren't, we were fixing this, but they weren't watching the bottom dollar, they just assumed somebody would say something. Well, we are, we are working on fixing those things.
How about the, the money that they're currently in debt, how we're gonna get that over there?
Um, I think we're gonna, Tony has a plan for that.
We'll fix all that stuff.
So first we'll take care of the sixty thousand for twenty twenty-three.
And then take care of the.
And then we'll, yeah.
Rest of it, we're gonna. Yeah.
Gary and I were trying to figure something out, so I, I will.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I wasn't listening.
No, that's okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and get Mark something to move the sixty thousand into the four D budget for twenty twenty-three, it's already in there, it just needs to move. And then we will work on the, uh, part that's in the hole.
Yeah.
Hopefully this, this new person I'm gonna have.
Will help, yes. Right, exactly. Right, and then, and then when we're working on that, we have an issue with the, uh, Voca grant also, but we'll, we'll do those later.
We probably need to have. Jeff, I'm gonna look for your expertise here again. For the health department, we probably need to have a line item for five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I think we put that in last time, didn't we?
No, I don't have that on.
Yeah, it's, it's right there, she's got it in there.
Okay, where'd you put it? At the bottom?
At thirty-four.
And then we still have, um, the four D court in there, right?
At six. Every year, I think it goes, it continues every year. It is, um, thirty-three two oh two.
Is the five hundred thousand you have in there for the health department for next year enough?
Yeah.
Yes. Cause they'll generate two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand in, in fees, so.
And they'll have money left over at the end of this year.
Yeah. Um, the one-time expenditures, that is an area that we could, and, and I'm not suggesting we do it now, but that we could reduce.
Yeah.
What we're going to.
I was thinking about two fi- two point five, I know.
So at this point, I got a grand total of eighty-seven, eight million seven fifty-three five sixty-three. Eight million seven hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-three.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred. Did you get it? It's probably not as.
Oh, it's been, okay.
It's gonna be a line item and then in January, we'll.
Okay, I put it in, I didn't see. I got now eight, eight million two hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-three.
We could probably cut our, um, travel, lodging and meals. I know just a few of us stayed at conferences in that, but it doesn't look like we've spent fifteen hundred.
Do we qualify for that?
Out of that, elected officials. Yes.
No, we reduce it to zero then. Fine, thirty-three two thirty is zero.
Eight two five two oh sixteen.
Election board.
I know she was in here and explained that, but some of the amounts that she's paying those people for her new proposal amounts are a little high compared to other counties.
We got a total of one eighty-five, one hundred eighty-five thousand.
Where was the fifty thousand change?
Thirty-three two hundred is fifty thousand.
Okay, that previously didn't have anything in it.
The twenty-three budget had thirty thousand.
Yeah.
We knocked that back because it wasn't an election year. So it's going back up to fifty?
Well, that's what is in here right now. So what's your grand total on that one, Debbie?
You match.
So, did we change the elected, uh, or the, uh, all worker salaries yet to what she's wanting? Did we change anything on that?
She had seventy-five thousand in election workers and we.
Yes, she changed it up from twenty-three one fifty to seventy-five thousand.
We've left it right now.
Her basis for that is, it's not bad, but some of it's a little high, but I, it's not gonna bring it down thousands of dollars. But I, I just looked at what other counties are paying election workers and some of these costs are, they're, they're at the top. So I don't know if we want to adjust it exactly.
This will all have a minimum that that has to be. Do we just set that wherever we want?
I don't think it's not a state statute or anything like that.
Didn't the election board set those rates?
Well, they can suggest them, but we have to pay them.
Well, it's like everything else, we-
We have to prove it.
We appropriate the line item, but I think the, the rate is established by the election board.
Aren't you on that? Did you vote on this?
He was. I was, I ran for council.
Oh.
But I wasn't on there long enough to be able to answer that until-
That's right. The daily rates aren't bad, the election day rates are just really high.
She said it was higher because it was a long, long day. I don't-
It is a long, long day, but.
Starts about five o'clock at the board meeting, ends, ends whatever.
You bring your lunch and you can't leave and you can't talk on your phone, I mean, it's a, but you agree to do it. It's actually a fun day. But I think that's part of it. I think it's a fun day. Yeah, you can't get people to do it because it is such a long day. So, and, and then if the money doesn't make it worth your while, then, you know, why are you gonna do it? Cause a lot of people wouldn't. So I think that's why she's trying to- I'd like to see her cut out some of the vote centers too, voting centers and save some money that way, but. Cause I think we just have to.
On election day.
No, the, well, vote centers on election day is important, but the early voting centers, we don't need.
Those lead one eighty thousand.
Yeah. Like, I was getting ready to say, we don't need that one in Hagerstown, no. I mean, we have the courthouse open all the time, but that, I guess, we don't get to decide that. Unless we don't fund enough money to pay for that.
Let's move ahead for the time being.
All right.
County commissioners, all kinds of money here we can-
We surely missed some opportunities. Debbie, on that one, on the features, I've got five million, two forty-four, four seventy-five.
Man.
Which is, for Jeff's benefit, actually less than.
There you go. Amazing.
Less than when you were commissioner.
Can't be, yeah. We'll have to dig that up and see.
Carpet fund was a million.
I did have a pretty big contingency fund.
We did a pretty good job of slashing this.
Yeah, Jeff was here when we did it, he walked us out.
Why is there not a, at least on mine, there's not a dollar amount for one oh nine, one two executive secretary?
Well, we put that in, it just was not put in on the original sheet. Yeah, it was left.
So it's fifty thousand, four sixty-one?
Yeah.
Correct.
Two, nine, twelve. You have it in there.
It's there. We are not cutting Bobby.
As long as she brings the chocolate, she's okay.
Yeah, when you're missing chocolate, it's cause Max is getting out of your basket.
You got thirty-three, five eighty and thirty-three, five ninety.
Twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand. Jeff, you were on the animal thing. You said that there was, they were gonna come back with something? What are you anticipating there?
I anticipate that they'll give us contract.
Dollar amount? Okay.
How's it this year?
Forty two.
Forty-two? It's gonna be more? Interesting.
Dog food, it's gone up price.
Here's a solution, here's a solution.
I don't know, I don't have either.
I don't hear a motion on those, so let's go on to plan commission.
Debbie, I got a total of two oh three, two ten percent.
It's getting better as we go along.
Yeah, and we cut that one pretty good last time.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything here.
There's there.
This looks like I T, I don't see I T written anywhere, but I T, yeah.
I have a total on that, seventy-one million, one twenty-five, seven sixty-eight. Matches hurts.
I think it's pretty well went, they're done. We took the cell phones out of there for the health department, stuck it in their budget.
On thirty-three, six twenty, I've just got a note that's, looks like it says more.
Printers and scanners.
Oh, they have more printers and scanners.
That must be what he said to us when he was-
Thirty-three, six twenty, yeah. He raised it to thirty-five, from thirty-three, one ninety-six. He's already spent twenty thousand, one ninety-five for the first half of the year.
On, Jeff, on health permitting and zoning permitting, do you guys take a look at what you charge for that?
So we don't, we really don't know how much comes back in from that, do we? What our income is on that?
So, forty-four, four fifty.
Raised ten thousand, four forty-two. Already spent eighty-five, five eighty-eight.
I, I was thinking maybe one-time expenditures, but it, it's really a reoccurring expense.
I'm not sure why he raised that one, I don't have a note on that.
Inflation, I would assume.
I know, but he never spends the hundred and fifty anyway.
But he's already spent eight, five and a half this year. Probably a part of that's just whatever it turns out they need.
Yeah.
At the bottom, last one.
Forty-four, four fifty. But he's not spent that before. We could probably move that back ten thousand.
Back to one fifty, just leaving.
Let's do that. Line item forty-four, four fifty goes from one sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. You agree, Max?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Court services.
Yeah, total of one million, two twenty-four, five million.
One million, one eighty-five.
One million, two- Personnel line. Yes.
It's good.
Fifty-seven, five hundred. Yeah. Line item twenty-two, four seventy. How much?
No, we've got forty-five thousand on that.
They had for, they had forty-five thousand in last year's budget.
Oh, okay.
Forty-five thousand.
That's what I got, yes. They spent-
That's their requested amount too, didn't it?
When you first came in, you had, it's a request.
Now, it, in our book, it shows forty-five thousand. Okay.
It's been forty-five thousand every year, it looks like.
Looks like.
Yeah.
Not really sure. Yeah, they spend-
Twenty-one, they expended forty-eight thousand. In twenty-two, they only spent, no, fifty-five thousand.
They spent fifty-five, so we better leave it.
Yeah. So what's your new total, Debbie? I got one, two, two, four, five million. Fifty-seven, five hundred.
I have six, two, four, five, four, seven. I've got twenty-two, one twenty, two thousand.
Wait a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty.
Twenty-two, one twenty is two thousand.
Oh, okay, got that.
Twenty-two, one fifty-five thousand.
I got three thousand.
We've got three on that one.
Three on twenty-two, one fifty?
That's what they requested on, according to my sheet.
It's three thousand in our book.
That's what they've had the last few years.
Three thousand, yeah.
Are you in agreement now?
What's your total now, Debbie? Total on two thousand, this would be.
Sixty-five, maybe fifty-two thousand.
I got fifty-seven, five hundred. So it's two, twenty-two, one twenty.
Two thousand, twenty-two, one sixty, three thousand. Twenty-two, five seventy, forty-five thousand. Twenty-two, four seventy, like five thousand.
Oh, no, we don't have five thousand there. We don't have anything there.
That's right.
Four seventy-one, doesn't have anything.
So now we've got ninety-seven.
That's right.
Okay. Hands forward. One, two, one, four, five, one.
I got one, two, two, four. So what's your, so we're down here in the-
The three thousands.
Three thousand, my total is seven, twenty-five, three, forty-five.
Seven thirty-four, so there's ten thousand too much somewhere.
Look at thirty-three, one ten.
Yeah, thirty-three, one ten should be thirty thousand.
Thirty-three, one ten, I've got thirty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, I got forty on that one.
Well, we changed it, okay, we changed it to thirty.
Okay.
So that's you, and not her, right? Should be the fine.
Looking at thirty-three, oh, four oh. Kinda take a look at what twenty twenty-three has been expended. And there's probably a little over a hundred thousand that were kind of one-time.
Okay, so she's already put some of that capital case in that line item. So the reason that's numbers high, twenty-three expenditure.
That's what I'm saying, with, without-
So pull the fourth out, hundred back.
That amount-
I'm, I'm looking on, to see if we could reduce that fifty thousand.
That amount, uh, that Jeff provided last time was one thirty-four, five thirty-five was the amount they've claimed so far.
But that was probably more current than-
A hundred and thirty-four, five thirty-five, that was, that was just a co- last week, actually, a week ago, yeah.
With those numbers, okay. So now that number is probably
Oh, yeah.
Hundred and twenty-three thousand currently. So that's- So that's probably one that we could not change.
Even though some of that stuff will get transferred.
But the popper attorney line is still gonna get hammered.
Well, in twenty-
Regardless.
In twenty twenty-two, they spent four hundred, yeah, four hundred, forty-nine thousand.
We've given it extra money several times.
We, we could maybe move it down to three seventy-five. Knowing we might have to transfer if we, if we-
But in twenty twenty-two, we spent four hundred and forty-nine out of that.
That was coming out of COVID.
But knowing how many cases they have right now, I, I'm gonna say-
In twenty twenty-one, we spent three hundred and nineteen.
You can set it wherever you want to, as long as you don't lose sight of our longstanding agreement.
That we're gonna-
Those lines, we're gonna fund.
Yeah.
There we go. Chalk and turkeys, one of them, and testing, this is enough. So as, as long as you know that, there's no standing back.
Yeah. I think we should leave it. I think we should leave it.
Okay, we can leave it at four hundred. Line right above it, though, what was the increase that jurors are going to be paid?
It doubled.
It doubled?
Well, I, they're gonna get paid double.
The, the double daily rate.
Yeah, their, their daily rate doubled for appearing. And then it doubled if they serve.
Okay, but if we take a look at that and it looks like twenty twenty-two would be the highest, you double thirty thousand, four fifty-one, couldn't it be more like sixty-five thousand here again? We gotta fund whatever happens. But if you double that year, I think it could be sixty-five thousand instead of a hundred thousand. So line item thirty-three, oh, eleven would go from one hundred thousand to sixty-five thousand.
Thirty-three, one ten.
Thirty-three, one ten would go from forty thousand
To thirty.
To thirty. But thirty-three, oh, eleven, Max, goes from one hundred thousand to sixty-five thousand.
What's the total now, Debbie?
Okay, superior three. Max, what's yours, number?
Five hundred fifty-three, five thirty-seven.
Personnel?
Thirty, three twenty-two, four thirty-seven? Two thousands, sixty-five hundred.
Yep.
We have thirty-three, oh, ten, two two hundred.
Yes.
Zero, zero.
Yes.
Thirty-three, oh, fifty, zero.
Wait a minute, thirty-three, oh, forty.
Thirty-three, oh, forty, one. And we've got fifty, three, oh, five. Five hundred, one, ten, one.
Yes.
Thirty-three, one, sixty, a thousand. Thirty-three, one, seventy, two thousand.
Yes.
Thirty-three, two, hundred, two thousand.
Yes.
The next one, I changed for a last one, thirty-three, oh, nine, five.
Yep. Five thousand, five, five, three, two, three zeros.
Any other proposed changes? It's okay to me.
Corey's really good about going through his budget.
Probation totals?
One million, seventeen thousand, five forty-six.
We're good on that. Any, anything?
We got that part changed in the budget request, right? That thirty. Yeah.
Do you have fifteen, sixteen, six, four?
Six, six, three.
A dollar?
That's close, somewhere around there.
Uh, first one, six, twenty-six, four, eight, nine.
Six, twenty-six, four, eighty-eight.
But your very first one, one, oh, one, three, you have thirty, two, seventy-one.
Which, which account number?
The very first one.
Very top one, it's supposed to be thirty-one, thirty.
I have thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
I got thirty-eight.
Eight?
Yeah, thirty-eight, two, thirty-one. Oh, two, thirty-one, okay.
Should you have two, thirty-one? Should you have a zero instead of one?
Potential change, thirty-three, two, fifty, witness fees, have never spent anything out of that. Transfer if they did. Is everybody okay with zeroing that?
Yeah.
Thirty-three, two, fifty, from sixteen hundred to zero.
I don't know how we do all this and then we miss things like that last time.
Maybe it's not very long.
Yeah, it was getting late.
Yeah, eighty, two, zero, sixty-four.
Eight, eighteen, oh, sixty-four.
EMA?
I got ten, oh, nine, thirty-nine, one, one, nine.
A question, um, Jeff, they have holiday pay as a line item, is that?
EMA.
May, line item thirteen, six, thirty.
So you put the, the, four, seven, three, sixty-five, something, special rates when people work off.
Thank you. I think twenty-two, one, fifty, I started to, last time, to reduce that.
He explained it.
It's ten thousand right now.
Must be something that he was planning on doing special there.
I had his letter, I, I, I had his letter explaining it, I can't remember what it was, but I read it to us last time.
What about thirty-three, two hundred? I've got an asterisk next to, next to that. That's was his, um.
Cheers for dispatchers and software for public information requests. I think he's putting in new software for the public information requests.
He was here and we had his letter, and I, I think all these got explained.
I, I've got PR for some reason, rather than.
He may like the, the.
Reports.
Software may.
Okay, if we're good, uh, building department, total max.
Three hundred thousand, nine hundred and four.
You agree? I think this is one Jeff let us.
The majority of that is personnel.
Okay, I've got an a- asterisk by thirty-three, two, forty, education, cellphone.
Oh, yeah, they haven't spent anything this year.
Twenty-twenty-two, they spent two thousand, twenty-six. Thirty-seven hundred's been the number every year.
I can't even remember who we're in.
Expended twenty-eight hundred dollars.
But this year, nothing.
Twenty-twenty expended twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
And so they'll pay the building and grounds, and the building commission cell phones, all the building grounds, cellphone budget, like, first part of the year, if they're not done yet, they'll use the building commission.
Okay. Do you hear that?
They haven't spent anything this year, though.
Yeah, the second half of the year, they pay it out of this, the first half of the year, they pay it out of building and grounds, for some reason.
Okay.
That's why they've spent.
Okay.
Still looks like, I don't know why, it's thirty-seven hundred, the most they've ever spent's twenty-eight hundred.
Not a big difference there.
Okay.
Um, the jail.
I got five million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, ninety-nine. I got three, three fifty-one.
Oh, I see that one. Three, three, five, one, zero, nine, nine.
Okay. On the two thousands, I've got one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
One fifty-three, five, three.
So we're off fifteen.
The, the first one, twenty-two, one, ten, is fifty-five, thirty.
I got four thousand. No, I, that's.
I'm at thirty-five hundred on that.
You, you, you're a friendless off that they would.
Twenty-two, one, five, five thousand. And the other two changes is twenty-two, four, thirty, I've got twenty-five thousand, or I guess that's one, 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 fifty-three, five, nine.
I got one fifty-four, five.
You did thirty-five hundred.
Wait a minute, I, I found another mistake. See, one fifty-three, five hundred.
Yep. So is that green total? Five, five, six, one, five, nine, nine.
Which is still over two hundred thousand dollars in uh, over last year.
I didn't hear you about.
It's still over two hundred thousand dollars more than last year.
That intake healthcare.
Uh, that's, yeah, but that's not in here, is it?
Well, it's.
Oh, yeah, it is in there, okay. Yeah, that's right.
We changed several ones.
Where'd we put that MA healthcare at? Oh, okay.
Total.
We've got a good lot of dollars here that probably more here that we can.
What's the reason we added that five thousand dollars in training at the bottom that's never happened?
He'd have been paying some of that out of commissary, he wanted to pay it out of his, out of his.
Oh, that was when he said he wanted our good faith, um, contribution towards it, right?
I, I think it's gotta be.
I think it needs to go. He paid for it before out of commissary. You think we need to keep it, Tony?
I think it works. You're further, further ahead than I am.
Sorry.
I haven't come across it yet, what line item?
It's the very last thing.
I think if the state mandates continuing education for the jailed deputies, then there is an obligation for it to be paid for by the jail fund and not a hundred percent by commissary. Because if he, if he had no.
Is that why?
If he had no commissary revenue, he would be paying for.
Yeah.
So.
But there's a lot of things that we pay for that could be paid by the commissary fund, um. Yeah, I, I think we probably need to continue to pay for it out of commissary fund, that's my opinion. Uh, to, to, I mean, it's gotta, gotta be paid, but I, I think we need to leave it there.
So where you're saying that the state has increased that amount?
I'm not saying they increased it, but if there are state mandated continuing education units
Is there?
Jail deputies, um, then as an incumbent, for that to be paid out of commissary, that, that.
Are there state mandated things?
If I told you, if I told you yes, um, I'd be guessing.
Okay.
And if you cut it and put it back in commissary, I, I mean, that's not the end of the world.
Well, I think he just took part of it out of commissary and put part of it in us, because we said.
He's been paying it all out.
Yeah, and he's always been paying it all out of there.
Five thousand out of this budget.
Twenty-four hours annually mandated in service.
For each?
For each jail officer. But like I said, if you cut it and put it back in commissary, it's not majority consensus up there, I think it's the way.
So what are you doing, Tony?
Is. Are you in agreement?
No.
That we reduce that to zero?
No.
What was the number again?
Training, five thousand.
Eight ninety.
To zero. Did, did we have agreement?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Look back up there to thirty-three, thirty-three, two, eighty, that return of fugitives. It's just been set at ten thousand every year, but.
Which one was?
Uh, thirty-three, two, eighty.
We spent five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five this year.
We have, have.
We turned that thirty-three, what?
Two eighty.
He was a deficit last year, twenty, no.
I think that represents, something was transferred one way or the other, use that as a transfer, but
Yeah, because they'd only spent.
In prior years, he hasn't spent that.
That's right. Twenty-two was three hundred and seventy dollars, and twenty-one was twenty-five hundred.
I'm not sure why the increase this year, lots of fugitives, I guess.
Thirty-four hundred.
Just looking.
It looks like twenty-two, eighty-five hundred and thirty-four dollars in the hole.
Well, I think he had us transfer it, because he wasn't spending it.
I think he could go to seventy-five hundred, maybe.
Everybody okay? That, that's line item thirty-three, two, eighty, goes from ten thousand to seventy-five hundred. And Max and Debbie, do you agree?
Five, 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 four.
Next up is the drainage board, which really isn't anything there.
Thirty-three, seventeen.
Forty.
On four D, um, salaries for ten, nine, fifty-two, nine, sixty, nine, seventy-one, nine, eighty-one.
Oh, yeah.
And eleven, three, thirty, all need to go back to the twenty-three.
They are.
They got switched last time.
When they're nine, six, seven, it's twenty-five, four, seven.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, nine, sixty, nine, seventy-one, and nine, eighty-one, sorry.
Three fifty-one, seven, oh, five.
Look at line ten, nine, fifty-two. That should be thirty-five, forty.
Thirty-nine, no, it should be thirty-nine, three, thirty-nine.
Correct.
Thirty-nine, three, thirty-nine.
Uh-huh. Uh, on nine, forty-nine, ten, nine, forty-nine, what do we have there? Okay.
Eighty-nine, forty-nine?
Yeah, thirty-nine, eight.
I got forty-seven, nine.
Well, that's because that was wrong, it's supposed to be thirty-nine, eight, ninety-four.
Thirty-nine, eight, nine. Thirty-nine, eight, forty-four.
No, eight, ninety-four.
Eight, ninety-four, thirty-nine, eight, ninety-four. Uh, total, personnel, uh, three fifty-one, seven, oh, five.
I, looking back at, at history, we've already reduced it some, but I think we could probably reduce, reduce it another thousand. Line item thirty-three, two, ten, currently is at six thousand. I think we could go to five thousand, even though they have spent twenty-eight, uh, forty-two, there's probably some prepaid postage there, if you kind of look at the totals, I mean, there's no way that postage has, postage has gone up, but it hasn't gone up that much. So I would propose thirty-three, two, ten, go from six thousand to five thousand.
Yeah, they don't match on personnel yet.
Let's change that one he just said, and then get back to personnel. Say that again.
Eighty-seven, three, nine, two, seven, one, five, eight.
You did, you got that one changed back. Eight, seven, three, eighty-eight. Eight, seven, three eighty-eight.
Okay.
Yes. So the whole bottom line, I got is three sixty, four.
Soil and water. Max, what's your total?
One eighty-six, nine ninety-six. Personnel, I've got one sixty-eight, eight ninety-six. Pardon?
Oh, do you?
I got twenty-five hundred.
That's what I got.
I have a thousand written in.
Oh, do you? Fine, I didn't get that one.
They already spent a thousand sixty-seven dollars this year.
Yeah. They've.
It may be that we were going to change it and then we didn't.
They've historically spent more.
I think so.
I think so.
So what's that? Put that total back. Yes.
Okay.
The bottom line.
Okay, going back to thirteen, six forty. We did this on some others. They've never used overtime.
At the fair, are you in the fairgrounds now? Are you, where are you?
I'm in soil and water.
Oh.
They say we move thirteen, six forty to zero. Question, I think it's for Gary. Thirteen, six forty went from five hundred to zero. The part-time. Why? Is that twenty-four, five twenty-one?
I've got a question for you. That one, three, four, eight oh.
Three, four, eight oh.
Is it, has it been empty? I mean.
If, in twenty twenty-three.
Representatives, I don't really know.
Well, is that, is that the part-time that's with all the group together? Is that the part-time that they just hired?
Sally Ornette shows bacon at this time.
Is that the one that they hired and then the person left recently?
That was an educated coordinator. That, that would have been in there. Yeah, she left. That's very possible.
But is.
But it was part-time.
So that's a combination between soil and water, WR.
It's preservative.
Yeah. That seems like a high number.
Getting somebody is why we haven't spent much in that line, I believe.
Now, she didn't, she didn't start till after school was over with.
And then she's, and she's already quit.
She's already quit.
So they've reposted that?
Reposted that, yes.
So is that a right number for that?
Twenty-four thousand five. Here for twenty-nine hours, twenty-four thousand five twenty oh eight.
That's what we got.
Yeah. So did we?
That's what it would be, that's what their annual salary would be.
We gave them that person in twenty-three? Is that what we did? Because always before that, they've never spent more than.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's why it only.
Before that, it was an intern.
Yeah, it used to be.
Which we couldn't get anymore for some reason.
Twenty-three expenditure is sixteen hundred and sixty-seven, which makes sense because it's just a short time.
Yeah.
Right.
That'll just revert back.
Yeah, I'll quit already. On total, one eighty-six, four ninety-six.
Okay.
You have what, Max? One eighty-six or one fifty-eight?
One eighty-six, four ninety-six.
On the total for the whole thing.
Oh, total, okay.
Next up is the fairgrounds.
I got a total of three hundred and twenty-five, oh, eleven. One fifty-six, one one one. Fifteen thousand, two hundred.
Yep, right at the top, I think. Two thousand?
Yes.
Three thousand.
Yes.
Thousand, six thousand.
I got seven. I put it wrong.
Six.
Three twenty-four.
Contractual professional went down to thirty-one. Thirty.
I got thirty-seven, four hundred.
Thirty-seven, four. On thirty-three, two hundred.
Okay, um, same budget, line item thirteen, four eighty, part-time, twenty-five thousand, forty-eight. They've expended forty-five, four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five in twenty twenty-three. That's probably before the fair. In twenty twenty-two, they expended ten thousand, seven forty-eight. Nineteen thousand the year before and two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. At twenty-five. And this is one controlled by the commissioners. Do you think that could go to twenty thousand in part-time, Jeff?
Is that just for seasonal part-time or something, or? We knocked one part-time clear out.
Yeah.
They've only spent forty-five hundred so far.
They transferred almost ten thousand out of that line, uh, in twenty-two to use for something else.
Do I get Steve to ask him?
Uh, anybody else?
So were we off on the bottom line? I got three twenty-four, oh, eleven.
For fairgrounds.
What's next, Tony?
Yeah, I'm still finishing their budget. Okay, we'll come back to that building and grounds.
Which is fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand over last year. No. Yeah.
Just one part-time position, the other one was, uh, used to move money to the new, uh, that marketing manager.
We got rid of the one.
We marked him out.
It's the other, it's the current part-time position.
Like it's not being used.
Forty-five, oh, forty-eight.
They hired somebody.
Okay. Did you guys agree on the building and grounds number?
Yes.
County sheriff.
Which one?
County sheriff.
Civil process is at thirty-three, eight twenty-one. But that's the one that we just changed the part-time, correct?
Which one is it?
Item again.
Ten.
That's the one.
Or ten, eight hundred, which would it be? So ten, eight hundred, forty-three thousand, that's the one that he just retired.
Ten, five thousand, three forty-four.
That's the one he just retired and our council meeting, we changed it part-time?
No. We're not changing that to part-time item.
Yeah, because.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
In the jail budget, we moved the animal control.
So what's the part-time amount gonna be?
Part-time should be twenty-four thousand, five twenty oh eight.
Say that again, twenty-four thousand?
Twenty-four, five twenty-one.
Sorry, that's not it.
Which line item was that?
Ten, eight hundred.
Ten, eight hundred.
Thirty-two, eight seventy-five.
Well, we just changed it today.
So what came out?
Thirty-two, eight seventy-five.
And probably after the account description, you might want to put PT.
Well, because all we were doing was changing the position title.
No.
Same line item, just changing the title.
So then where's that part-time that we made full-time?
It's in the jail budget.
Oh.
The animal?
But the thirty-two, eight hundred was Randy's position. Who just retired.
Yes.
So that position becomes part-time in twenty-four.
And that's the ten, eight hundred?
Yes.
And it only, it only went down that much?
My understanding was we were changing that eight hundred to just a, a title, a position change.
That's what I thought.
And there was no difference in classification, there was no difference in money. He just wanted to have civil process server and animal. That's what I understood. And then the part-time animal control officer, the position would change because they're the same classification.
To a civil process.
To a civil process.
You're right.
There was no money exchanged.
That forty-five stays in there.
Titled only.
But one's going from full-time to part-time and the other one's going to part, from part-time to full-time.
Separate that out. That part-time line item is staying the same. It's a civilian hold-to at the rate. We're just changing the position because it's already in a part-time line.
Yeah.
That was, that's my understanding. That's all we're doing.
Yeah.
Was the position.
You're right.
You're right. So which line item is the part-time? Person that was, it was animal control, right?
Yes.
What's the line item?
And it's not in this budget?
It is in the jail budget on page sixty-five. It's line item one, two, five, six, two.
But it stays the same, right? Part-time. It's just called civil process now instead of.
Yes, we just changed the name of it.
Give me that line item again.
It's still in the sheriff.
So that's twelve, five sixty-two.
And, and it was just a title change is what Kim's saying.
So it goes to full-time.
Let's hope you don't go to jail because right now you're a little busy.
We need you. Don't go to jail then.
So it's animal control is now full-time and what's the salary?
It's just a name change, that animal control officer that's part-time?
So it stays at that?
I don't know. Oh, animal, right there. Oh, he has. Yeah, he's now civil process.
Part-time civil process.
Part-time civil process.
So. Ten, twelve, five sixty-two in the jail budget. What's that?
Making that animal control slash process serving? Civil process, yeah, it is.
Eight hundred in the jail budget.
Animal control officer in the jail budget is number twelve, five sixty-two.
I'm saying that's what we're moving it to, what you agreed upon.
And we're taking it to what?
Twelve, eight hundred. So if you see the twelve, eight hundred, civil process server right now.
Yeah.
All we have to do is put a slash in it.
She did.
That's it.
Oh. Money stays the same.
Wouldn't be a transition as it came to.
And she already went and changed the part-time animal control to civil process in, in there, okay?
Is this title change in this budget salary ordinance?
In which budget you meant, Max? Jail?
I think so.
Jail is one, two, five, six, two.
One, two, five, six.
And that description, that's civil process now.
Now, civil process.
Yes.
What's civil?
Part-time civil process.
One, two, five, six, two, description is gonna say what?
Part-time civil process.
And the salary stays at thirty-two, seven time?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. So go back to the sheriff's.
That ten, eight hundred stays the same, but it's just civil process slash animal control.
So then, Kim, what does ten, eight, twenty become?
I'm sorry, so now I'm back on here.
You're right. It stays the same. It's just civil process slash animal control. Who's the civil process, um, officer, one, oh, eight, two, zero?
Yeah, ten, eight, forty.
So then that one's gonna say what, Beth? The description is gonna be what?
Civil process slash animal.
Slash animal, okay.
Yeah, we've already got the full-time.
That eight twenty that you just referenced, okay, that's a civil process secretary.
Oh, it says office. No, the secretary is eight, ten.
There's two.
There's two.
Salary ordinance, there's two civil processes.
They make the same, but one says officer and one says secretary.
That's right.
So I think that's.
Eight twenty should say secretary.
That makes sense.
Okay, eight twenty says secretary.
Eight hundred is the one we're changing.
Yeah, well, the name, that's all.
So ten, eight hundred, what's the salary on ten, eight hundred?
Forty-five, three forty-four.
Stayed the same and did not change.
Forty-five, three forty-four and did not change.
Ten, eight, ten is classified as process secretary.
Yeah.
Is there another?
Eight twenty.
One, oh, eight twenty. It says civil process officer, but it's a, it's another process secretary, just like the one above it.
We got two process secretaries.
Yes.
Fur's mud, guys.
There's a civil process tech clerk too. What's that person do?
Like border secretary.
We'd be booting people here.
It's in salary ordinance.
They make more than other people up there, I was just wondering.
You got to work catalogs, all that stuff, and keep track of all of it. Maybe fresh pass Randy will do that.
So Debbie on the sheriff, what's your total now?
Now where we at, Tommy?
Okay, you agree on sheriff's tip? I agree with all the, what rest of the way through? Line item thirty-three, eight forty.
Crime control.
Now, do we know what that is?
I gotta know here, drug task force contribution. Fifteen thousand.
Yeah. It went up twenty percent. Entire year there.
Back in twenty.
Twenty-one was twelve thousand.
For a long time.
Twenty-two is fifteen, twenty-three is fifteen.
Okay, county clerk?
Eight thirty-five hundred.
Yes. Anybody?
I think so, we were, she was in here when we did this one.
Yeah. Max, how much?
It's over the twenty-three budget and I've got a couple of mistakes to fix on that yet. But right now I show eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents over the twenty-twenty-three budget.
Eight forty-seven, two forty-eight?
Yes.
That's not bad. We've got the health department money in there and we've got, um, uh, the QCC contract in there. The QCC jail, the health thing. We've got all that stuff in the budget now. And a new prosecutor and a new person in their department.
And the three judges positions.
Are they in here?
I don't think so.
I don't think they're in there yet. And we have to talk about a raise.
Court services, I don't show any news.
We put the auditors in, right? Just be a grant person. Yes, we did, we changed that.
I don't have any of the court positions in there.
We have so many requests this year. I would, I mean, I don't know, we, for employees, I don't know if we can absorb one of those court employees this year or not. With everything else and we still have to talk about a raise.
I don't know what is how much, what we get from the income tax.
What's it typically?
Between the two, it's, it's about a million dollars.
Additional?
So we could. How much is our budget different from last year?
Eight hundred and forty-seven.
And that's our new money. Well, we took the two hundred, we've got the two hundred in the budget now, that, because we were counting that two hundred coming off. The QCC contract, we kept taking that off of our new money, but now we have it in the budget.
It's in the budget.
And we're eight hundred different. So if our income tax money's around a million, we could do a five percent.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying property tax and income tax.
Oh, altogether?
Altogether, that'd be about four hundred or less on the income. You know, this year, this budget year, um, the election budget every four years is always higher. And that's twenty-twenty-four.
If we take, if we back off on our one-time money, five hundred thousand, that would help. Because we haven't really talked about.
Several items over there.
Put five hundred thousand for the health in there.
Yeah, we've got five hundred thousand in our healths.
It's in here.
Yeah, I know that, we're doing, we're doing pretty good, actually. We've cut a lot of stuff. Uh, as far as more new employees.
How much are the court employees?
Uh, forty-three, three, ten each.
And we probably wouldn't have to budget for those benefits. Based upon our experience rate. So it's really more the, um, the salaries themselves. We could cut one-time expenditures, five hundred thousand.
If we don't get to do as many projects this year, we don't get to do as many projects, I mean, you know?
One-time's currently at three million. Yeah, we've got.
We don't have a lot.
All those expenses, if the money didn't get in summer.
That's this year. On our one-time money. Whoops, that's not right, no. That we have been talking about so far this year. There's just a few items on there. Oh, there it is. Fifty-five thousand in the ditch fund, thirty-five thousand for a floor machine. Those were the only two things so far that we said we would take out of one-time money. There is a skidster that could come out of, I mean, it's been mentioned to come out of ARPA, it could be our one-time money.
About the, um.
Forty-five hundred dollars in coronary equipment that could come out of ARPA.
What about on Steve's report?
That's what I was.
That's one-time money too.
That is, and we're gonna have to figure that out.
Since nothing was in summer, we should take out a general fund, yeah, this year.
Yeah, we do. Do you have sheriff's cars on that one-time list? Um, I do have the boxes for the fifty-six thousand for the. Equipment, I'm sorry. Equipment. And then also Debbie's voting. Well, we still don't know if that's gonna be. Right, but I mean, we had it on that list, not in her budget. No, it's, yeah, it's kind of on the ARPA list. And, and there was just a message out about the grant from the state, hopefully we'll get to that. Yeah, I just saw they were talking about it, but they still haven't let her know. Because I think she'll call me, I, we've talked about it enough times, I think if she gets it, she'll let us know.
Equipment for the cars and also tasers.
No tasers. I don't have that written down. Skid, I have a skidster for the highway at fifty-eight thousand, thirty-five thousand for jail floor machine, coronary equipment, forty-five hundred, and then the fifty-six thousand and then Debbie's two items, two fifty and twenty thousand. Remind me what we were talking about, those four in-car. That was a hundred and four thousand, the four in-car computers and then the forty terminals. Where were, where were we talking about that from? For the sheriff's apartment?
We're not doing forty terminals.
Okay.
Came back with.
I marked it out.
Um, only doing a third.
Is that in his budget? I, I marked this out on my notes and I don't know why.
We cut his equipment maintenance service contract from one sixty-nine eight down to seventy thousand.
Okay.
Because we're moving that, that car equipment over.
Okay.
You're right, we, we had discussion, but we left the tasers in the budget.
So when will we, when, when should we know about our, our funds for sure?
I thought we would know by now.
I know.
You, you guys have not heard anything, have you?
Our money was in the.
Last year, it was late in the time when Jeff got, or when we got a number on it, it was the year before, it was towards the end of the whole process. The income tax dollar.
Yeah. So, uh, one percent raise is around two hundred and fifteen thousand, two seventeen, something like that, right? Depends on who's she, I said around.
I think Kim's is two hundred fourteen or something.
Something like, a one percent raise is two hundred and fourteen, does two seventeen, something like that.
It's like one ninety-nine or something.
So a five percent raise is a many dollars.
I think we need to move the court employees if we can. At least one or two.
Into our budget?
If not, we're gonna start behind the eight ball.
Oh, yeah, because we'll have to add one.
So if we added those three, that's what, a hundred and thirty thousand or so?
If we add one, we can add one in twenty-five and one in twenty-six. Because the, we still have ARPA still. And we could go ahead and do one this year and then. But that's, I, I don't care. I, I would not expect to get the amount of requests next year, my, this has just been the craziest employee request year.
Other than.
But, I mean, usually it's.
Other than once prosecutor came with this big list, I would not be surprised to see about the same amount of requests.
Really?
Not that we have to do anything, but the prosecutor's gonna come back with another one or two.
You think?
Yeah.
Okay, he's been asking, we finally gave him, we're giving him one this year.
I think he'll ask again, that one we do or not. Sheriff's gonna have one or two that he wants. He always does.
All of it, thirty, that'd be nine, it'd be about nine.
You don't know how many he can fill right now. But you can't, you can't use that money.
Two and a half percent of the range.
Use it during the year, transfer or reverse back. And we could, you know, we could look at our general fund balance, do we wanna take that down some?
I know.
Inflation right now is three percent.
Very much. We took everybody to the midpoint.
Oh, tax collection, then we're.
Yeah, we haven't talked about.
The Irwin report.
Yeah, and the Irwin report had some recommendations on the, the truck drivers and some of that, but we haven't talked about.
And we asked for that.
Yeah.
We have to look at that.
Mike Sharp was in here this morning, is he here for something?
I don't know, I messed up. We, I told him originally, we, that the twenty-twenty-three request is gonna include the operator. And then that got changed and with everything going on, I told him, you weren't happy with me, I admitted to it, I forgot to let him know it someday.
I'll make mistakes.
I'm in the doghouse with him.
I guess I would tend to tell me, let's put the forty-three, three, ten back in court services three times.
All of them?
And then what did, and mid-subjects changed before you did that.
Play with the numbers from there to see where we're gonna be.
So the new positions would be how much?
They are forty-three, three, ten.
It looks like it'd be.
That's the amount?
Uh-huh, and there's three, um.
Ten, nine, eighty-two, ten, nine, eighty-three.
You say forty-three, two, ten, three, ten.
The numbers are on here?
There's only three of them, two, just forty-three, three, ten. And actually, two of them make up administrative position, two of them just balance that out.
On the court services? I mean, three hundred and nine thousand, four thirty.
It's nice to have somebody to match up with in there.
That's good, make sure. We got, we got seriously to talk about the truck drivers, there's two or three others on that list, I think.
Bookkeepers and truck drivers were the things we had them look at and, um.
The only, the only bookkeeper that we've changed at this point was.
Yeah. I didn't bring my, um, report in.
I've got it, I'm not sure where to find it.
Is it in this?
Yeah.
I fixed that, I didn't bring mine in. Oh, I have it in my email.
So it was sent to us?
Yeah.
Trip over anything? What are those, uh, what are those, are they comet or?
We're giving the two, recommendations for classification change.
Okay, and which?
probation which you care of this morning and the other one is gonna be.
Is that the comet? But what about the truck drivers? Did they change any amounts?
They didn't change classification, but they changed.
Yeah, so the LTC, which is letting, including the building miles and fare grounds, that recommendation for LTC was seven point eight zero percent. And also the, uh, employees in the jail kitchen, those are their LTCs.
Are those on this request thing?
Um, no.
So the comet four going to comet five in the auditor's office?
And we have it very thick.
What's the difference in salary, it's not a whole lot of it. The new amount.
For this year, we'll go twenty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, now it's twenty-three, fifty-six.
Oh, I've seen, I didn't see that.
Oh, I'm seeing, I didn't see the headers over there.
Truck driver is going to go from twenty-sixty-five to four hundred and sixty-four looks like. Or twenty-three.
Do you know the number on what, uh, those reclassification things would, just on those things?
Yeah, you, you for all classes.
Or the, just the ones.
With that seven point eight.
You had a sheet that had all the midpoint. And I'm, I'll find.
Yeah, but I have it, but I'm not, unless it's in my draft, I don't see the LTC classification. This could have been like that. So I'd rather double check that.
To go to the midpoint, I got all, like that sheet you sent out on that. So which ones you looking for?
Across the external midpoint, it's not on my sheet, but I'm looking at the Irwin report. Shows that that total for all L-LTC would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven twenty-seven. Again, part of that's out of highway and not the general fund, so I, I'd have to separate that out, which I easily do.
Okay. Is a big part of it out of highway?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
We have building allowance, a pure for in the jail fairgrounds, but the majority of it's highway.
Then they have to figure out where they're gonna get the money, not us.
And Mike would be glad to take that out by two minutes or something.
Yeah. So we only just have, we've already done one, so we just have the other bookkeeper or the.
Yes, for the payroll clerk. I know you mentioned some, I've looked at a couple. The really not bookkeepers are like office managers, but they're still at a higher level, but that's their title. It's office manager.
Say that from when they had the bookkeepers meeting and all these people came and they weren't on the list and I'm like, hey.
And just because of just, just the title description.
Workshop?
I think. We think about these things.
Digest right here.
I think we've, we've got to address the, the truck drivers.
I'll get that separated out.
Okay. I feel good that this is all been gone through two times now. We all, they agree that, that we know where we are.
Do we think we're in pretty good shape on the non-general fund items?
I think so.
Do anybody double check what I said?
No. Okay.
Yeah, and I think Captain, we took pretty good notes on those non-general fund.
Yeah, the, um. And on the. Employee raise, we may have to look at it as they got a pretty good amount last year. We did six and a half percent. And. We might be in a little better position for twenty-twenty-five with it being a non-election year at all. As far as. Uh, that budget will be significantly reduced. Now, we can't just replace it because then the next year there is an election. In twenty-twenty-six, but we're in a little better position in, in twenty-twenty-five, so. I will, I will make some calls and see if there's anything out there on the, uh, income. Addition. Hopefully it's not a subtraction.
But if it is, we need to know.
It can be either way, but, um. Surely somebody over there in Indianapolis has to have some idea of what we're looking at. And in the meantime. You know, if we can take a look at the, uh, truck drivers and the bookkeepers and see what. Uh, that number is, and then we can talk about it as a. Item, if you can, Bobby, put it on the agenda as the last item on workshop. We can address it at that time.
Tony, do you know, has Mark talked to, uh, Wayne Hudson? Has he asked him at the DLG up? Do we know?
It is. As soon as I find out or you find out, you need to. Let me know.
Anything else?
Yeah, at our last, uh, meeting, we talked about having to, um. Take this document and, or are we gonna circulate it back through the department heads for them to look at where we are looking?
Yes.
To make cuts.
We did talk about that.
And I'm, I'm, I'm one that thinks we have to do that.
If we can send everyone's budget back to them with the cuts we've made.
And if there are. Questions or concerns.
Contact Barry Ritter.
Yeah.
You don't have, you don't have to take the heat on that, Debbie. You're just typing in numbers for us and we will, we will take the heat.
That's right.
But they need to reach out to their department liaison.
Exactly. Well, either their department liaison or the head of finance, which would be.
Second.
That's right.
Um, just to let you know, I.
Don't all have a liaison.
This morning, um, after personnel meeting from Becca over at the health department. And what you agreed upon this morning is posting the two infectious disease specialists. Her text, as she indicated, the two positions, which I just said, were turned down by the state as the health department took too long. She didn't elaborate any more than that, so that's all I have, but that's off the table right now.
Took too long to what?
Took too long to process for the grant, I guess, so it's been turned down, so.
Uh, the whole grant?
It sounds like the whole grant. Lesson learned, I sent the text. Everybody knew that.
Debbie, when you, um, send that out, could you send that updated to all of us also? Please.
Yeah, I guess for you should. Do I, cause I don't know how to even, just one tab. Am I supposed to send?
The whole thing, yeah, yeah.
You mean send the whole thing to everyone?
No, to us, we want the whole thing. You can't just.
All, all you need to do is just click on the tab and create a new one. Create a new, uh.
Each one?
Book and ti- title for that person and send it to them.
And you want me to do it for, uh, all the county budgets, all the general?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you should for that too.
Did we do any? We did change some, yeah. We did change some.
We made some changes.
So the action we took in personnel, do we need to?
If they don't have the grant, they, they're not gonna post it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's moved.
But do we need to do that officially? Will we granted them? Ability to?
We're not gonna hire because it's nobody.
I hope not.
Well.
Okay.
It's a done deal.
So you wanna make a motion to rescind that due to the information we received. I would not.
Motion, I'd feel better about it.
I'll make that motion. Being the grant been disproved.
He already made it.
You're seconding.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that way it's in the minutes, though. Oh, that's right.
That would, that should be in the personnel committee. That should be in the personnel committee minutes, is that what you said?
She'll have it both. No doubt where it's coming from. Okay, do you, anything else? You good? I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
See you at workshop on the twentieth.